I'll ask the monitors to take attendance. All town meeting members, please assemble in their precincts. The result of the special election in Precinct Two, Margaret Myad and Thomas Myad of 31 Cedar View were elected as town meeting members in Precinct Two. Paddy? Precinct One?
Eighteen present, seven absent.
Precinct One reports eighteen present, seven absent. Precinct Two?
Nineteen present, eight absent.
Precinct Two reports nineteen present, eight absent. Precinct Three?
Fifteen present, fifteen absent.
Precinct Three reports fifteen present, fifteen absent. Precinct Four?
Eleven present, thirteen absent.
Precinct Four reports eleven present, thirteen absent. Precinct Five?
Sixteen present, ten absent.
Precinct Five reports sixteen present, ten absent. Precinct Six?
Twenty-two present, seven absent.
Precinct Six reports twenty-two present, seven absent. Precinct Seven?
Eighteen present, ten absent.
Precinct Seven reports eighteen present, ten absent. Precinct Eight?
Seventeen present, twelve absent.
Precinct Eight reports seventeen present, twelve absent. At Large?
Fourteen present, nine absent.
At Large reports fourteen present, nine absent. One hundred and fifty? One hundred and fifty members being present, we have a quorum. All right, at this time, in order to clear up any misunderstandings or past problems, I'm going to ask the town clerk to swear in. Invented, some people apparently did not go to the town hall to get sworn in when they were elected town meeting members to avoid any problems. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and then have Amy swear us in as town meeting members.
Good evening, everyone. If I could have you raise your right hands. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as town meeting members in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Milford and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So help you God. Thank you.
The meeting will now come to order and the clerk will now read the warrant.
Good evening. Special Town Meeting, October 22nd, 2012, Milford, Massachusetts. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either Constable of the Town of Milford and said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, on the 22nd day of October, 2012 A.D., at 7:30 P.M., and then and there to act upon the following articles. Article One.
Motion made in second with the dispensing of the reading of the articles. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion to dispense with the reading of the articles? If not, the question comes upon the motion. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. The clerk will now read the officer's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass., date September 28th, 2012. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the Town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of the warrant in ten or more public places in Milford. Thomas O'Laughlin, Police Chief.
Are there any resolutions to be presented to the meeting? If not, I'll recognize the Chairman of the Finance Committee for a report.
Oh, he's got it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Louis knows about that stuff. Yeah, it's going to be a two-nighter.
All right, before I start this presentation, I'd just like to point out that the Finance Committee sent out two reports. You should have all gotten them in the mail. First is our recommendations on all the articles for tonight, which is this report. And second came from the Budget Subcommittee on a paper that we did about 11 years ago on how we would handle free cash stabilization, budget, capital, et cetera. We've updated it and it was included in that package. This is basically what I put up last fall, just so everybody remembers. Presently, we're at 81 million in budget, 55 million in levy capacity, state aid was 22 million, and debt service was a little over 3 million. Where are we as of the end of FY '12? Certified free cash of over $3 million and available levy capacity of $3.6 million. It was a good year. Finance Committee recommendations, we're recommending, and we'll see that in a later article, taxpayer relief of $1 million, which we promised, funding requests of 4.8 million. Debt service, we're holding steady at 3 million. Stabilization, we're going to try and put 500,000 this year. That'll leave about 1.2 million in free cash and about a million in levy capacity going into next year. It's just a history of where we are with taxpayer relief, and as you can see, we've increased it every year going forward. Where did the money come from? Everybody asks. Additional state aid, additional new growth estimates, additional revenue from hotel taxes. If you recall, we passed an increase in hotel tax last fall and we reaped about $250,000 extra in fiscal '12. Additional revenue from excise taxes. A lot of people bought cars last year, so that was a benefit to the town. We had to carry over about a million in free cash and we had unused levy capacity that we carried forward. Finance Committee continues to run conservative budget management. Reduce long-term debt, pay stuff out of cash if we don't have to put it under the debt schedule, increase the funding for infrastructure, buildings, roads, maintenance, increase stabilization or rainy day fund, and increase money to the tax rate.
Are there any other committee reports?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So, the report that you have just now theoretically all gotten a copy of, if I missed anybody, we have extras, so we can fix. If we have any people who didn't get all three attachments from the CIC, so there should be three pieces of paperwork from the CIC. If you didn't get all three, we can take care of it. I did have some extras, which I didn't expect. One of them is the report to this body for this meeting. The second is a very long spreadsheet, and the third is relates to Article 31, if we get that far later. So as pertains to the report for you all, as the FinCom Chair mentioned, the, in his report, you'll notice that they've approved all of the capital improvement articles, which are before the town this evening. There are 38 total articles. Seventeen of those are capital-related, and 12 of those fall under the CIC's jurisdiction. The report that you have, basically, you'll notice on page two lays out a table which prioritizes these, the projects, the 12 capital projects. And this order is, by the way, derived from some guidelines from the state. Department of Revenue has a capital planning manual. Following those recommendations, we came up with this ordering. You'll notice that it's presented in this table in a ranked order from one to 12. I've given the second column to, you know, cross-reference to the article number. Brief description of the project. The CIC project rating, which you'll see is described right below the table, basically was the committee's perception of the priority of these projects, as you know, for the town, followed by the requested amount for each article, and then in the very final column, a running total. So if you were to select and choose to vote for all of them in order, it would build up according to the running total, ultimately getting down to a number that's about $3.8 million. Now, the CIC project rating, you know, sometimes you might see, like, for instance, the very first item, it might look like there's a slight discrepancy. How can the number one article in the ranking order also have a priority of three? That's the town hall windows, and this was because of its large size, and also the perceived need didn't seem to be there. That is to say, that the windows in this building are 90 years old, and if we were to go one more year, what would the difference be? It basically boils down to that. We do, however, recommend all of these projects. So regardless of the ranking order, regardless of the CIC's project rating, all of them, based on their merits, were approved by the CIC. And of course, as I said, the FinCom also approved them. So at this town meeting, where you might be looking at it and saying, "Well, we've got some tough choices to make. There's a lot of money involved. Maybe I want to select some of these things from the, you know, sort of à la carte. Pick one or the other, vote for it, against it." Since the FinCom is, in this case, approved or, you know, found them all favorable, that is, has a lesser degree at this meeting. You, of course, still can look at our guidelines. The recommendations still apply, but because we seem to have the money for everything, you know, the prioritization is less important than it might be, let's say, next year or the year following, once the Woodland project actually hits the books. So what follows after that in the CIC's report, and I apologize, we didn't mail this to you, but we don't have, we simply don't have a budget to mail out. In fact, I had to spend a little money of my own just to copy all this stuff for this body. But, having been said, on page three and beyond, in the order as they appear, the article numbers, you will see a brief description of, you know, we paraphrased the articles so you know what we're talking about, followed by a little bit about how consistent it is with the town's capital improvement, excuse me, comprehensive plan, followed then by the CIC's capital, or, excuse me, project rating, basically its priority. It's a simple number, one, two, or three. One being the highest, three being the lowest. This was kind of in response to previous CIC scores that were on a scale of 0 to 25, and most people thought that was too cryptic to be useful. So we came up with this very simple plan. You know, one is critical, down to three, which is not urgent. Next little blurb, and this is consistent for all the articles, you'll see just whether we recommend it, and as I mentioned, all of them have been recommended by the CIC. The last bit is sort of new, something I know the FinCom has been asking for in the past. When you look at that table on page two, the ranked order, what makes one item above or below the item next to it? And that's what that last little bit's about. It sort of goes into the scores that were earned by each of the projects based on that Department of Revenue's capital improvement planning recommendations. So that, then, is the CIC report. The attachment of the long spreadsheet, just to give you a rough idea, obviously, what you'll see here is dollars on the left by the fiscal year across the bottom, and in the front, you have the total capital improvements requested over the fiscal years shown. I should note that projects like the New Woodland School, which have not yet been finalized, can't be put on the schedules since, you know, there's no, there's no dollar, solid dollar sum to apply. Obviously, you can't apply text to a bar chart. So just bear in mind that you'll see, the first note underneath the bottom of this bar chart indicates that there's about $15 million worth of capital projects that are not covered on this long-term plan. Things like the reparation of Godfrey Brook and so forth. Obviously, that $15 million does not include Woodland's Elementary School, since we don't even have a, you know, beyond $45 to $60 million, we simply don't know that number yet. As I mentioned before, the total capital requests coming before us tonight are $3.8 million. The capital reserve target, which you'll see in that wireframe box in the middle row of the bar chart, is a placeholder the FinCom has established for all capital projects. You'll see that for this year, we're about 500% over that figure. But again, the FinCom's report indicates we have the money, so not a worry, but just have a look at that and understand that, you know, this is quite a bit more than what we were anticipating at annual town meeting. The final bit of this bar chart in the back row are the five-year average of the current five-year plan. If you take all the requests in the current five-year plan, that would represent the five-year, you know, those blocks, the big black box in the back. So that gives you an idea of, you know, how we're comparing to the average, how we're spreading it out. Beyond fiscal '17, which is off the current five-year plan, you'll see, everything looks considerably more consistent with the, with the CIC, excuse me, with the FinCom's capital reserve target. However, this is mostly because of the Fire Department. They've got their books planned way out to fiscal '26, and so these are the only things in the, in the sort of long term that we're aware of. There are some exceptions. A few of the other departments did have some idea of fiscal '18, but essentially, everything from that point, you know, beyond the current five-year plan, represents mostly the Fire Chiefs' requests that are going to be coming down. Fiscal '18, you'll notice, it looks like it's about the same size as the target. It's actually, there's a $1 million pumper truck there, or, excuse me, ladder truck, and that will be about $200,000 over that target. So this is just to give you a feel for what's laid out, the things we've been tracking all these, you know, last couple of years. And that's pretty much is what was facing the town. I would point out, as I said, that since the Woodland project is not yet known in its size or, you know, when it starts, when it's going to finish, obviously, as I said before, it's not represented on this chart. But it also, of course, means that we know it's going to come due very soon, within the next couple of years, to be sure. And when that happens, you know, obviously, things are going to get a lot tighter. How tight? Can't know that yet because we haven't seen the plan. But just keep that in mind that while this year, like last year, everything is in agreement with the FinCom's recommendations, unfortunately, once that Woodland School project is a known quantity, things are going to get real tight, and that's the point where things are going to start to be perhaps harder to say, you know, we're going to have to make harder choices. So the recommendations, obviously, will become more significant than they have been for the last couple of years. So bear that in mind as you look forward, you know, at the capital outlays for the future. Thank you.
Are there any other reports? If not, what is the pleasure of the meeting? Article One?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. D. Bartolomias.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,000 to be utilized for the July 4th, 2013 celebration.
A motion has been made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,000 to be utilized for the July 4th, 2013 celebration. The Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen has also submitted a report indicating their action on the articles, and I see that it's three to zero to support the article. Does any voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article Two.
I move that the town vote to accept as and for a public way, a private way known as Dynasty Drive with a pertinent easements, as described in the report of the Selectmen dated May 1st, 2012, as follows.
Motion made in second with the waiving the reading of the legal description, if it's, as it was in the report of the Selectmen, is the same, Selectman Murray, it is. Any voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Planning Board and the Town Engineer have recommended favorable action on this. Dynasty Drive is part of a subdivision known as Dynasty Estates II, which is located off of Purchase Street. The developer and fee holder is Dynasty Residential Realty LLC, 120 Quarry Drive in Milford.
The reporting of the Planning Board is?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation from the Planning Board. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to accept as and for a public way, a private way known as Celestial Circle, with a pertinent easements, as described in the report of the Selectmen dated May 1st, 2012, as follows.
Motion made in second with the dispensing of the reading of the legal description, if it's exactly as appears in the report of the Selectmen, is it?
It is, Mr. Moderator.
Does any voter care to be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Planning Board recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At a public hearing held April 30th, 2012, the Milford Board of Selectmen voted to lay out Celestial Circle as a public way. The Planning Board and Town Engineer, as you just heard, have recommended favorable. Celestial Circle is part of a subdivision known as Dynasty Estates II, which is located off of Purchase Street. The developer and fee holder is Dynasty Residential Realty LLC, 120 Quarry Drive, second floor, Milford, Mass. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Four.
Mr. Connolly. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to sheds as follows. By deleting in Section 4.1 definitions, the definition of shed, and by deleting Section 3.2.4 sheds in its entirety and adopting in lieu thereof the following new section 3.2.4, 3.2.4 setback reduction notwithstanding the above, the required side and rear yard setbacks may be reduced by not more than 50% of an excesses, excesses, yeah, excesses, here we go. Excesses, yeah, I can't, accessory, thank you. Building or structure not exceeding 120 square feet in gross floor area and 10 feet in height.
A motion has been made in second of the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to sheds as follows. By deleting in Section 4.1 definitions, the definition of shed, and by deleting Section 3.2.4 sheds in its entirety and adopting in lieu thereof the following new section 3.2.4, 3.2.4 setback reduction notwithstanding the above, the required side and rear yard setbacks may be reduced by not more than 50% for an accessory building or structure not exceeding 120 square feet in gross floor area and 10 feet in height. Does the Planning Board have a report or recommendation?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section 48, Section 5, the Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on September 4th, 2012, regarding the subject of Article 4, at which time it voted unanimously to recommend town meeting approval. The Planning Board recommends that Article 4 be adopted as printed in the warrant. Article 4 deletes the definition of shed in Section 4.1 by the zoning bylaw and replaces the current Section 3.2.4 sheds with a new Section 3.2.4 setback reduction dealing with reduced side and rear yard setbacks for small excess, thank you, excessive, I don't know what the, it's a one word. Excess, yeah, okay. Building instructions, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I was staring at that one word that I can't pronounce. The Planning Board has proposed Article 4 to clarify and simplify the setback reduction provisions by eliminating the somewhat circular reference currently employed. This will more clearly achieve the original intent, which was to provide limited relief of setback requirements for small buildings or structures. The actual setback reduction remains unchanged. Required side and rear yard setbacks may be reduced by not more than 50% of an excess, accessory building or structure not exceeding 120 square feet in gross floor area and 10 feet in height. The Planning Board urges your adoption of Article 4 as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Does any voter care to be heard? Up front, yeah, so we can hear you. Please state your name and precinct.
Brett Stopey, Precinct Seven. I just wanted to know if this article will affect current sheds that are in existence as of this time. My shed is currently 184 square floor feet and 24 feet tall.
Town Council, Moody.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, the- Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, the very basic concept in zoning called grandfathering. Anything that's in existence prior to the date of the first advertising of the planning board public hearing, which couldn't have been more than a month or so ago, is grandfathered and can remain.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, which is an amendment to the zoning bylaw and therefore requires a two-thirds vote. In order to, um, speed up the, uh, meeting, I'll take a, since no one spoke in opposition, I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. By taking the voice vote, I'm not, uh, encouraging the vote far against, but just, uh, for purposes of speeding up the meeting. All those in favor of the motion as presented will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article five.
I move the, I move the town vote to delete the provisions of Article eighteen of the general bylaws entitled Capital Improvement Committee, and at the same, same time amend Article Two of said bylaws entitled Finance Committee by inserting a new paragraph within section four thereof, which paragraph shall state as follows: The Finance Committee shall have a permanent subcommittee on capital improvements, which subcommittee shall evaluate the capital needs of town and its various departments, and shall report and recommend therein to the full Finance Committee.
Motion made in second of the town vote to, uh, delete the provisions of Article eighteen of the, uh, general bylaws entitled Capital Improvement Committee, and at the same time amend Article Two of said bylaw, uh, entitled Finance Committee by inserting a new paragraph within section, uh, four thereof, which paragraph shall state as follows: The Finance Committee shall have a permanent subcommittee on capital improvements, which subcommittee shall evaluate the capital needs of, of town and its various departments, and shall report and recommend thereon to the full Finance Committee. Uh, does any vote again to be heard? Mr. Shane.
This one's a longer presentation. Um, as it states, the Finance Committee put together a subcommittee back in May of last fiscal year, members John Kelly, Al Correa, Chris Moran, Mike Skiauvi, and Will Kincaid. And we sat down and, and decided that, um, in order for us to look at the long-term perspective with the woodland project on the horizon, it would be beneficial to do it, um, six to nine months in advance of this town meeting, and then continue on ad infinitum. The process. We'll review the article one more time, uh, we'll give you reasoning for the article, we'll present the process, then we'll present a proposed process, then a conclusion. We just read this. We don't need to read it again. All right, the responsibilities that they stand today. Capital Improvement reviews land, vehicles, construction over twenty-six thousand, equipment purchases over twenty K. They have a limited view of those items. Finance Committee reviews all items requiring a financial commitment of town monies. So we have a total view, and as you see in our report, we report the entirety. Why are we making this request? There's a redundancy in, in effect right now. Right now, and, and I'll show you a chart, a flow chart of what happened, but the proponents of articles go to the CIC, and then they come to the Finance Committee, have to make their presentation again, and then they have to make it again at town meeting. And we think that's a waste of everybody's time. Give the Finance Committee adequate time to evaluate capital requests and plan future funding requirements. And that goes to major capital projects, and, you know, we, we're recommending four point eight million tonight. We did review all those projects. Provide town meeting with a more comprehensive, long-term financial plan. We didn't have it done. It's here. It'll be posted on the website by the end of the week. This is the process, as I discussed, in place today. On the top is what the CIC does, and on the bottom is what the FinCom does, and it all feeds together eventually. Our problem is that we get information two to three weeks before town meeting, and we have to sit at a Finance Committee meeting, and with forty articles, it could be a three-night meeting, and make decisions on the spot. And that's not the way we should be doing business. This is the proposed process. We develop five-year capital plan. Can't even read that. We review it at subcommittee, the Long-Term Capital Subcommittee. FinCom review, it includes a budget subcommittee, the executive committee, and the Long-Term Capital Committee. Then we sit down with all the department heads and review it one more time on what we're going to fund and what we cannot fund. What we can't fund, we can move out. We can move the schedule back and forth, and, and we'll discuss that later in the project, in the, in the presentation, and fund what we need to fund for town meeting. This will also eliminate putting articles on town meeting warrant that are not going to be funded. Then we come to town meeting, and then the process starts all over again. We'll meet on an average of every six months. And please understand that we have subcommittees that meet with the department heads almost on a monthly basis. So there's no surprises going forward. Conclusions. We can prepare a rolling forecast of major funding requirements. As the money changes, as the, the amount of money we have available changes, we can move projects in and out. We can continuously review the funding sources. In other words, free cash, levy capacity, and stabilization. This will allow us to manage the operational budget and the long-term debt in a much better fashion. We'll eliminate multiple presentations, saving time, and more timely reports to selectmen and town meeting. We ask for your support. Now, next presentation is Long-Term Capital Planning's recommendations going forward.
Are you still speaking on the, on the motion? Well, wait a minute. Are you through, or are you just going to pass it on to someone else and, uh? Well, you're gonna, you have someone speak on the motion, be recognized, rather than just take control of everything. Okay? Who wants to be recognized?
Mr. Moderator.
Tell them right here first, I'll give you.
All right, uh, I'll talk fast. We got a lot to cover, and I know no one wants to go back to college operations classes, so, uh, I just want to cover some of the things about, uh, this Long-Term Capital Planning Committee, because capital planning is, it's essential to having a good financial health within a community, and it really is important that we, uh, go at this a good way, and the way we've come up with it, I really think it is effective. Um, some of the things that successful capital planning does is it sets long-range expectations for current and future capital expenditures, it sets expectations for, uh, selectmen, finance committee, town meeting members, citizens. And a big thing it does is it also reduces, and the uncertainty in the acquisition of capital assets. A lot of things we purchase are usually big-ticket items. Obviously, there's a lot of nervousness on how are we going to fund this? How are we going to pay for this? This, uh, committee helps to address that. The other thing it does is it facilitates postponing some capital projects. Um, we may not be able to fund something this year, but by putting the money away, maybe we can do it the next year. This committee will be able to look at projects and be able to say, almost like a show game, maybe we can move this out two years. Maybe we can fund this, we didn't need it till next year, but maybe this year is a better year to fund it because we have the money available. And the other thing it does is it gives town meeting members a, a little bit of a sense of comfort that we have a plan, we're not just stabbing at it for this year and wondering it, what's, how is this going to affect next year's finances and our, uh, capital, uh, project needs. One of the highlights of our plan is the, uh, committee members on it. Where it's going to be a select group of, uh, finance committee members, that would be the long-term subcommittee, it would be all the department heads, the town treasurer, and the, uh, financial advisor for the Finance Committee. Now, what this achieves is it gets everybody in the same room, okay? Currently, we're looking at a project at, as, from the highway surveyor, from the police chief. We're not having everyone in the same room saying, oh, they need this this year, I need this. By getting everyone in the same room, we know all the projects that we're looking for this year, next year, and for many years after that. So it's easy to say, this project is a good project, but this year we can't fund it because the highway surveyor has something that's more important this year. By getting everyone in the same room, it eliminates a lot of redundancy, and everyone can see the big picture, which is extremely important. The applications would come in in electronic form to our committee. It would contain the reason for the, uh, request for capital, as well as what the intent of the project is, and some of the things like return on investment. And people are always like, well, how do I know what a return on investment on a front loader is? Okay? Something like that, like you're going to see later today, we're getting a front load, or we're applying, or, on an article for a front loader. It's going to save independent contractors for plowing, it's going to save from renting a unit, and that has a financial and tangible number. And by passing that along to us, we can see what exactly we're saving, and how this actually, uh, reduces the cost in the long run by making this capital purchase. Now, we'll be looking at two different things. We'll be looking at capital assets and capital improvements. You can see up there, there is a big differentiation between the two. Obviously, a capital asset, um, it's like a building, uh, a piece of land, that type of thing. It'll have, you know, a life at least three years, and a cost of at least thirty, uh, thirty thousand dollars. A capital improvement is an alteration to a project, uh, excuse me, to an asset, something that either changes its use or extends its life. And right up here, we have some examples, as I just spoke about, to put it more into terms that, you know, that we had. Something like the new athletic field we put up at the high school, that's a capital asset. The generator we purchased a couple of years ago and put in, that would be a capital asset. Also, computers, everyone says, well, if it isn't up to that thirty thousand dollars, how is that a capital asset? If we're buying thirty of them, and they're a thousand dollars each, okay, they're basically grouped in together, and that's how you'd meet your minimums on that. Capital improvements, we're putting a roof on, oh, we hope to put a roof on the police station. That would be a capital improvement, okay? The parking lot improvement we did up at the high school, that's a capital improvement. The only thing that we would consider on the capital budget are things that are either capital assets or capital improvements. Normal maintenance is not going to be considered in this project. Things like painting, carpeting, that is normal, everyday maintenance would be covered under the operational budget, okay? The only time something like that would be covered is if it was part of a larger project. Say we were putting an addition on a building, okay? Any carpet or painting we did in there obviously would be covered in that. But individually, that'd be covered by normal operational spending. The other highlight of this, uh, article in creating this committee would be looking at the big picture. Purchasing a capital asset is one thing. Paying for it, obviously, is the other important part. Our committee would look at the funding sources available to us and how we can pay for it. Because as the chairman said, if something comes before a town, uh, meeting and it's not going to be funded, what's the point of even talking about it? Our committee would look at the different funding sources that are available, whether it's cash, whether it's bonding, or whether we have some grant money available, and we would see how would we would fund that project. And that's something we'd be doing years in advance. So once again, there would be no surprises. Because the whole point of capital planning is that this should never be a surprise. Granted, we could have a hurricane and, you know, a roof could fall off a building, but besides that, we should always know what's in the pipeline, and we should also know how we're going to pay for it. Now, this graph here just quickly shows you how on a year-to-year basis, things change. We have cash, we have bonding, we pay for things in different ways, and on a year-to-year basis, that changes. Of course, how much free cash is available, you know, how much is currently on, uh, the books for bonding, you know? Every year, you need to look at it, and it's a totally independent thing. And just here shows an example of how on a year-to-year basis, sometimes we don't spend anything on capital, sometimes we spend a lot, sometimes it's cash, sometimes it's bonding. This committee would look at that, because that is, like I said, buying the, buying the, uh, whether the equipment is needed is obviously the first thing, but how are you going to pay for it is obviously the second most important part. Uh, the only thing that doesn't show up on here, which we've done a great job in this town, things like the fire chief and the police chief who've acquired monies through grants for the dispatch, you know, Sue Clark, who does an unbelievable job getting grants, those are capital funding projects that are funded outside the town, specifically grant money.
Any other vote again to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Um, Mr. Visconti.
I'm going to ask him to suppose to sit down, so everybody has an equal chance of being right there. Sorry. Uh, town meeting members, Mr. Moderator, Mike Visconti, precinct eight. Uh, as stated by the previous speakers, Capital Improvement Committee, Finance Committee, there is no redundancy here. The Capital Improvement Committee and the Finance Committee were formed and charged with two completely different assignments. Capital Improvement Committee, I believe, originally called the Capital Planning Committee back when it was first formed, I don't have the exact date, back in the, uh, late seventies, eighties sometime. In any case, the Capital Improvement Committee was formed to and charged with determining the needs of the various departments and prioritizing those needs. The Finance Committee, on the other hand, deals with the funding of those prioritized needs and how they should be funded and financed. The two, the committees, two committees should complement each other. They should not be combined into one committee, as is, as this article tries to do. The Capital Improvement Committee adds a degree of objectivity that is needed in order for the Finance Committee to make recommendations on the various priorities. It creates a needed priority, objectivity that is, that is necessary. If we lose objectivity, as this article seeks to do, then we make poor decisions. If we make poor decisions, we waste taxpayers' money. Don't waste taxpayers' money. Vote no on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? Someone turn that, uh, Dennis, can you take care of that so I don't blind it? Any other vote again to be heard? Mr. Johnson?
Greg Johnson, chairman of the Capital Improvement Committee, and also precinct member, uh, precinct three town meeting member. So while trying to figure out how to rebut this article, one thing kept coming into my mind, something Einstein said, "Everything in life should be made as simple as possible, but not simpler." Carrying on from the previous speaker's comments, this is exactly the argument we have. There, there are two different functions here. Effectively, the CIC represents all the department heads, not the purse. We, we formed the shopping list. We prioritize it, we lay it out, we consider all the merits of the projects, whether they're even worthy to come forward. And then that, of course, we share with the, uh, Finance Committee, who then, of course, applies to it the financial processes that, that they do so well. Again, uh, this, you know, was by design, sort of a checks and balances to the system. And if we eliminate the CIC, we're effectively over-consolidating. We're losing an independent review of all these capital articles, um, which we feel is a mistake for the town. Of course, that is a decision left up to you all, and ultimately, it's a matter of, do you want one committee or two committee doing this? I see, you know, from the article, that when the subcommittee that already exists at the FinCom, as was mentioned, they report to the, to the Finance Committee themselves. They don't report to us directly. They report to the FinCom, who then, of course, in their report includes various bits of capital improvement. I've, I've seen it embedded deep into this report that we got from the Finance Committee. But you have to look for it. It's not right there on the surface. That's okay, and it still has to be done. Even if we weren't here, whether we are or not, the Finance Committee has to crunch the numbers. It's what they do. No matter whether we think an article's good or not, they have to figure out, can we pay for it? Uh, so there's a certain amount of what they call redundancy is just their job, and our job is to, like I said, if you think about it, you know, nobody goes, a smart shopper goes and prioritizes his list and thinks about, what can he afford? Now, we've heard some arguments about long-term planning. Well, I've shown you a chart. You've got it all, hopefully you've all got one on your chair. It shows- It shows you, they're not the only ones thinking like that. So we also have this in, you know, our long-term interest of the town in mind. It hasn't escaped our attention. Where we can, we put more on. Everything we can goes on there. Whether even initially too small to meet our threshold, usually until the warrant closes, we're not always sure what those final numbers might be. So we include it as a powerful course. I can tell you that this cycle, there are, as I mentioned before, five articles that don't meet the CIC's threshold, which, by the way, was twenty thousand dollars, or twenty-six, the way it's currently drafted in the bylaw. I thought I saw a slide from the Long-Term Planning Committee suggesting their threshold was thirty thousand. So they're not gonna look at certain things, they won't, they won't appear to be as significant as things we're looking at. Perhaps only a few, and ultimately, they are reviewing all articles anyway, so they pick up that slack. It's not to be worried that we'll lose that, but they're not the only ones doing it. So, so as the previous speakers, you know, mentioned, this is really a matter of, you know, over consolidation, as I said before. If you don't want an independent review of what the Finance Committee's thinking, you know, we're looking at, as I mentioned before in my report, when the Woodland School hits the, you know, becomes a finalized project with real numbers, these things are gonna get so tight, we're probably gonna start to disagree. For the last, since I've been the chairman over the last year and change, we've been in complete sync. Every article that we approve, so does the Finance Committee. So, so that's been a sort of happy harmony. But as the town council pointed out in a letter to previous iterations of the CIC, you know, that's not always intentionally gonna be the case. I mean, it is not inconceivable that the two committees might disagree on any given article. And then, we're here to help you make that decision, or at least give you the data that helps you make that decision. As I mentioned in that little table I presented, you know, we, we had some discrepancies with what we thought the guidelines from the state recommended, you know, in prioritizing that list from top to bottom. But we thought maybe some of those things could have been pushed. If there was a real crunch of money, we might have to push. And which ones would we push? And that's, that's, that's part of our job. That's what we do for you. And I urge you to defeat Article Five. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Crabb.
This is not about emotion. You got two groups of people working.
I'm sorry. Did you say this is not about emotion?
This is not about emotion.
Oh, motion, okay, I'm sorry.
Accessory. This is not about emotion. You've got a group of people doing hard work and another group of people doing the same hard work. But let me share with you what happens in practicality, because we're hearing that one group evaluates articles. Well, I'm on the Finance Committee. And a few of you know me, and I'm awfully conservative with your money. I'm not gonna vote for anything on a Finance Committee till I really understand the merits and what we can afford. So you start with five years, played out. We've got all the articles, Scotty's got his wish list, you know, everybody has their wish list. And there you go. We started here. Now, if you remember, the budget we talked about has about eight hundred thousand a year budgeted for capital. If you look at the charts, you'll probably see that if we took all the articles that start and have merit, you don't get eight hundred thousand. Now, for people like me to understand what we can support, we have to understand the articles. We meet with the town managers, the department heads, every month. We know what's on their list. Give you an idea, Woodland School's gonna be a big chunk. We all know it. We went to the school committee and said, there's no way that we can afford all the articles that you want for maintenance and capital and the school at the same time. They agreed that they would take their articles off. That chart went to there. Does it say their articles were without merit? Of course not. They were all good articles. When the chief comes to us and wants a new fire truck, how many times we've gone to him and said, but chief, you know, five hundred thousand bucks for a new toy? We know you need it. Can you wait a year? It's not saying it's a bad article. And as you see here, even doing the best we can, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. For us to make those hard decisions, I can't deal with four million dollars worth of requests in three weeks. This has gotta be something we do over the year, over and over, to get a good understanding. Then we gotta bring all the department heads together. It's a long process. CIC's doing it, we're doing it. We're gonna keep doing it, no choice. Because I, for one, I'll give you my word, I'm not committing a million-dollar purchase till I understand that I really, really need that money spent. And for me to do that, we've gotta know all the pieces. For us to know all the pieces that go into the decisions, we've gotta go through the articles over and over and beat 'em to death, because it's your money. I mean, we're, look at Milford's financial status. It's because of you, town meeting members. You've always looked at every article, and we've squeezed. We're gonna continue to. The issue is, do we do it twice? Because we have to do it. And then, once we do the merits, we have to figure out, as you can see that chart right there, even Portuguese math tells you, there's no eight hundred thousand there, and we certainly don't wanna count on free cash bailing us out. So I urge you to support this, not because we wanna do away with somebody's work, but another group's already doing it, and we have to do it in order to come before you with an informed decision-making process and informed opinions. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Viscotti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Mike Viscotti, precinct eight. It seems to me the simple solution to the problem raised by the previous speaker would to be a, would, would, is to have a little more communication between the CIC and the Finance Committee. That would solve the problem raised by the previous speaker, and we would end up with a more objective, more accurate point of view. Please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Motion is made to move the previous question, a motion to move the previous questions in attempt to shut off debate on the, on the motion that's before us. It's not debatable, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the previous question will rise and remain standing until
All, everyone else said, monitors? All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one.
Seven in favor, twelve opposed.
Precinct one reports seven in favor, twelve opposed. Precinct two.
Sixteen in favor, two opposed.
Precinct two reports sixteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct three.
Nine in favor, six opposed.
I'm sorry, nine in favor, six opposed. Precinct four.
Fourteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct four reports fourteen in favor and none opposed. Precinct five.
Five in favor, eight opposed.
Precinct five reports five in favor, eight opposed. Precinct six.
Fourteen in favor, seven opposed.
Precinct six reports fourteen in favor, seven opposed. Precinct seven.
Ten in favor, six opposed.
Precinct, uh, seven reports ten in favor, six opposed. Precinct eight.
Seventeen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct eight reports seventeen in favor, one opposed. Oh, I'm sorry, at large?
Uh, six in favor, five opposed.
At large, six in favor, five opposed. Ninety-eight having voted in the affirmative, forty-seven in the negative, one hundred and forty-five votes having been cast, the necessary two-thirds to shut off debate would have been ninety-seven votes, and it, we now take, the motion to move the previous question is carried. All those, the motion, all those in favor of the motion that the town vote to delete the provisions of Article eighteen of the general bylaws entitled Capital Improvement Committee, and at the same time amend Article two of said bylaws entitled Finance Committee by inserting a new paragraph within section four thereof, which paragraph shall state as follows, "The Finance Committee shall have a permanent subcommittee on capital improvements, which subcommittee shall evaluate the capital needs of, of town and its various departments, and shall report and recommend thereon to the full Finance Committee." All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is defeated. Article six. You can reconsider later on, if you are taking Article six. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be utilized by the park commission to purchase a new lawn tractor mower.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars be utilized by the park commission to purchase a new lawn tractor mower. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any vote to be heard? Mr. Moore.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, what we're doing is replacing a thirteen-year-old mower. Uh, it's a large mower with a forty, forty-two-foot cut. It's for our larger areas in the parks, in the school grounds, uh, which we take care of. So I would appreciate you supporting this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article seven. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, um, little mistake there, Mr. Moderator, in the opening, but I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars, said sum to be added to the Retirement Board Personal Services Line Item Number nine eleven dash five one one zero, as voted under Article four of the May twenty-first, two thousand twelve annual town meeting, said sum to be utilized to supplement the acceptance of the provisions of subsection J of section one oh three of chapter thirty-two of the general laws, as inserted by section nineteen of chapter one eighty-eight of the Acts of two thousand ten.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars, said sum to be added to the Retirement Board Personal Services Line Item Number nine one one dash five one one zero, as voted under Article four of the May twenty-one, two thousand twelve annual town meeting, said sum to be utilized to supplement the acceptance of the provisions of section J of section one oh three of chapter thirty-two of the general laws, and as inserted by section nineteen of chapter one eighty-eight of the Acts of two thousand ten. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Um, does any vote to be heard? Town Council Moody.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, the Retirement Board accepted the statute that's referred here in a little while ago, and it's the statute that allows the cost of living increase which retirees get, which is only applied to the first twelve thousand dollars. So whether my retirement is thirty thousand a year or sixty thousand a year, we're only talking about application of the cost of living to that first now thirteen thousand instead of twelve thousand. The percentage that's dealt with here is three percent, but again, to the first thirteen thousand, had been twelve thousand before. And the cost of it is as you see here. Thank you.
And does any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eight. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-seven hundred dollars, said sum to be added to the Legal Department Expense Account Line Item Number one five one dash five three zero zero, as voted under Article four of the May twenty-first, two thousand twelve annual town meeting, for purposes of replacement of items of electronic equipment.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand seven hundred dollars, said sum to be added to the Legal Department Expense Account Line Item Number one five one dash five three zero zero, as voted under Article four of the May twenty-one, two thousand twelve annual town meeting, for purposes of replacement of items of electronic equipment. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. I noticed that the Board of Selectmen also voted to support three to zero this article. Does any vote to be heard? Town Council Moody.
Ladies and gentlemen, the budget for the Legal Department is very small, and in working with the Finance Committee, we kept it at nineteen seventy-four levels, so it's about four thousand dollars. We just had a perfect storm in terms of equipment failures. Our vintage nineteen eighty-seven dictation system simply failed and couldn't be replaced because they don't make them anymore. We had to go digital, which wouldn't load onto our seven-year-old computers, which were failing in any event, and in the midst of that, the only other piece of electronic equipment, the copy machine in our office, broke. So we simply had to replace it, which essentially is more than half of our budget, and that's what you, you see there. So we've already done it to keep operational, and with your good graces, hopefully, you can supplement the budget and we can keep operating. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nine.
Dennis Carroll. I move that the town vote to amend the personal bylaws of the town by adding a new section five dot one-three as follows. Longevity pay. Longevity pay shall be granted to eligible personnel in the following positions. Administrative assistant to the town administrative, confidential parking clerk, assistant town treasurer, assistant to police chief, assistant to fire chief, legal assistant, legal secretary, community development office program coordinator, Milford Youth Center Assistant Director, in accordance with the following schedule. Three hundred and fifty dollars per annum, effective years ten through fourteen; four hundred and fifty dollars per annum, effective years fifteen through nineteen; and six hundred and fifty dollars per annum, effective years twenty and beyond. Said benefit to be effective as of the employee's tenth, fifteenth, and twentieth anniversary dates, and applicable retroactively to July first, two thousand twelve.
The motion's been made, made in second, to amend the personnel bylaws of the town of Milford by adding a new section five point thirteen. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation. Does any vote to be heard? Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Moderator. This amendment will serve to bring the, the previously listed, uh, jobs into parity with similar positions within the town of Milford. We request your favorable vote on this.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article ten.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to unregistered vehicles as follows, by deleting section three point ten junk cars in its entirety and adopting in lieu thereof the following new section three point ten. Three point ten unregistered vehicles, no person shall permit unregistered motor vehicles or parts thereof to remain on their premises except as provided for herein. Three point ten point one, in residential office, residential, business park, and central commercial districts. commercial districts, the outdoor placement and/or storage of unregistered motor vehicles or parts thereof is prohibited. Three point two, three ten point two, in neighborhood commercial, highway commercial, and industrial districts, outdoor placement and/or storage of unregistered motor vehicles is prohibited unless a special permit, such use is granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Three point ten point three, junk cars in all districts, the outdoor placement and/or storage of junk motor vehicles or parts thereof is prohibited. Three point ten point four, the foregoing shall not apply to motor vehicles or parts thereof stored or garage entirely inside of a building.
Motion made and seconded to amend the zoning bylaw relating to unregistered vehicles as follows, by deleting Section three point one zero junk cars in its entirety and adopting in lieu thereof the new Section three point one zero as appears in your warrant article. Does the Planning Board have a recommendation or report?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass. General Law Section forty-eight, Section five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on September fourth, two thousand and twelve, regarding the subject of Article ten, at which time it voted unanimously to recommend town meeting approval. Article ten replaces Section three point ten junk cars with a new Section three point ten unregistered vehicles to better regulate unregistered and junk vehicles within the town. The Planning Board recommends that Article ten be adopted as printed in the warrant. Essentially, the Planning Board is proposing Article ten to not only clarify the language of the bylaw and better regulate unregistered vehicles, but to eliminate the confusing, the confusion, excuse me, regarding the need of Class one and two licenses. The main cause of the proliferation of, here we start, prolific, thank you, Aldo, why don't you come up beside the side of me, of Class two licenses in Milford is the current structure of the zoning bylaw and its requirements for such licenses. The proposed amendment eliminates the current provision for junk cars and the requirement for Class one and two licenses, but retains the junk car definition and prohibits the outdoor placement and/or storage of junk motor vehicles for parts thereof. See the new Section three ten point three. By creating a new Section three ten unregistered vehicles with specific standards for where unregistered vehicles may be kept, this amendment will better achieve the original intent to strictly regulate unregistered and junk vehicles in town without forcing an increase in the number of Class two licenses. Therefore, the Planning Board urges the adoption of Article ten as printed within this warrant. Thank you.
Does any other vote indicate to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Russell Abyssala, Precinct three. Couple of questions. One, is there any penalty involved in this if someone does have a junk car? And I have a problem with Section three dot ten dot one. If I were lucky enough to have a Maserati that I only registered during the summer months and I stored outside for the rest of the year, unregistered, so I don't have to pay insurance and registration, only registered for six months, according to this, I would be in violation of this particular article. But it's not a junk car, it's just something I choose not to register for the six months except during the summertime. So I don't know how that would be addressed here and if there were any penalty as such for that. Thank you.
Any vote indicate to be heard? Town Council Moody.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the penalty for any zoning violation can be set by a judge up to three hundred dollars per day for any violation. So a violation of this particular provision would be subject to the same possible penalty. Right, the change that the previous speaker spoke about isn't a change. Right now, under the current provision prohibits me from keeping my Maserati unregistered in my property for six months. That's currently a prohibition. This doesn't change that at all. This, as I understand it from the Planning Board, is addressed to the problem that right now, to legally have unregistered vehicles, you have to get a Class two license, you have to get a Class one or Class three license. This is only changing that. The only way you're going to be able to have them now is, except for the ones that are grandfathered with a Class one or two or three license, is through the special permit process. But again, to the previous speaker's question, hasn't changed. It was impermissible before, it'd still be impermissible.
Any other vote indicate to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
There also doesn't seem to be any exception for an individual who wants to sell his own vehicle by putting it in his driveway. Am I misreading this, and why are we trying to control something like that? Also, why are we trying to control somebody putting his unregistered, brand-new car in the driveway or in his backyard?
Any other vote indicate to be heard?
Ladies and gentlemen, just for clarity purposes, as of today, you are disallowed from having an unregistered vehicle on your premises unless you had a Class A, or, excuse me, Class one or Class two license. So if you have a Maserati and you can't, and you do not have a garage to put it in, which we are allowing you to do so now, right as of today's standards, that is illegal and could be enforceable with a fine. That does not change. So we urge you to support this article because what we're attempting to do is not force those individuals to go out and get a Class one or two license that should not need to do so. That's all that this bylaw is attempting to do. It does not change what you're disallowed from doing today. Again, I urge your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote indicate to be heard? If not, the question comes on the motion, which is a change, an amendment to our zoning bylaw therefore requires a two-thirds vote. Since people have spoken in opposition, all those in favor of the motion will rise All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one.
Fourteen in favor, three opposed.
Precinct one reports fourteen in favor, three opposed. Precinct two.
Nine in favor, eight opposed.
Precinct two reports nine in favor, eight opposed. Precinct three.
Thirteen in favor, two opposed.
Precinct three reports thirteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct four.
Fourteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct four reports fourteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct five.
Twelve in favor, two opposed.
Precinct five reports twelve in favor, I'm sorry, how many opposed?
Two.
Two opposed. Precinct six.
Fourteen in favor, five opposed.
Precinct six reports fourteen in favor, five opposed. Precinct seven.
Fifteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct seven reports fifteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct eight.
Seventeen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct eight reports seventeen in favor, one opposed. At large.
Eleven in favor, none opposed.
At large reports eleven in favor, none opposed. One nineteen to twenty-three. One hundred and nineteen having voted in the affirmative, twenty-three in the negative, the necessary two-thirds has been acquired, therefore the motion is passed. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of the purchase of a front-end loader with a snowplow and a patrol wing.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of the purchase of a front-end loader with a snowplow and patrol wing. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation. Does any vote indicate to be heard? Mr. Chris Foley.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if approved, this machine will be replacing a nineteen sixty-nine Caterpillar front-end loader. The current loader is no longer roadworthy, it cannot plow snow, it's basically just used as a YAD machine. It would be cost prohibitive to try and make this machine safer over the road use. The new machine will be equipped with a front snowplow and a side wing plow, making the lower, more efficient snow plowing, snow removal machine. The new machine will also eliminate the need for a winter rental machine and would allow the Highway Department to hire less outside contractors for snow removal. Therefore, I ask your support on this article.
Any other vote indicate to be heard in the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
I move, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of one hundred thousand to fund the health insurance mitigation plan adopted under General Laws Chapter thirty-two B, Sections twenty-one to twenty-three.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to fund the health insurance mitigation plan adopted under General Laws Chapter thirty-two B, Sections twenty-one through twenty-three. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable, and I see was the Board of Selectmen has supported three to zero this motion. Barbara.
Yes. Town meeting members, the Milford Board of Selectmen adopted Mass. General Laws Chapter thirty-two B, Sections twenty-one to twenty-three for the purpose of modifying employee health benefits. As a result, the Board of Selectmen and the Public Employee Committee reached an agreement on a modified health benefit plan with an increase of co-pays and added tier deductibles, which ultimately increased out-of-pocket costs for its employees. These changes resulted in one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of savings in premiums. Those savings need to be shared between the town and the employees. As a matter of fact, it ended up being a fifty-fifty split. The main way we saved on these premiums was through a premium deduction to the employees, but there was also, in the law, inherent in the law, a means by which we had to help high-end users. So we set aside a hundred thousand dollars into a revolving account, or that's what this article's hoping to do, and that account will be available for high-end users until it is depleted. I ask for your support.
Any other vote indicate to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirteen. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of seventy-seven thousand and ninety-three dollars, said sum to be added to the Fire Department Personal Services Account Number two-two-zero dash five-one-one-oh, as voted under Article four, the May twenty-first, two thousand twelve annual town meeting, said sum to be utilized to fund the cost items in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Firefighters Association.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of seventy-seven thousand ninety-three dollars, said sum to be added to the Fire Department Personal Services Account Number two-two-zero dash five-one-one-oh, as voted under Article four of the May twenty-one, two thousand twelve annual town meeting, said sum to be utilized to fund the cost items in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Firefighters Association. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable, and the Board of Selectmen supports it unanimously. Town Council Moody.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you see, the number is seventy-seven thousand and ninety-three dollars. This is, in this case, the third year of a three-year contract which we're in right now with the firefighters. This body funded the first two years, two years ago essentially. There was a wager opener in the third year, which is not an uncommon tool in settling longer-term agreements. The wage settlement in this case lines up with the last year of the previous police contract, so, and it happens to be one and a half percent effective July first, two thousand twelve, and one percent effective January first, two thousand thirteen. So again, the Board commands us to put an affirmative vote on your part. Thank you.
And does any other vote indicate to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Dipartolmas.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one million eight hundred thousand, said sum to be utilized to dredge a portion of Milford Pond to reestablish deep-water habitat for aquatic species and provide recreational fishing and boating benefits. Such dredging to consist of an area of approximately twenty acres in the southern portion of the pond to a depth of approximately twelve feet using hydraulic dredging systems.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one million eight hundred thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized to dredge a portion of Milford Pond to reestablish deep-water habitat for aquatic species and provide recreational fishing and boating benefits. Such dredging to consist of an area of approximately twenty acres in the southern portion of the pond to a depth of approximately twelve feet using hydraulic dredging systems. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports the motion. Does any vote indicate to be heard?
Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, the Milford Pond Restoration Committee was established by the Milford Board of Selectmen in the early nineties after twenty-five residents of the Pond and Plains area attended a meeting respectfully asking the Selectmen to take serious action in addressing the negative effects being created by the pond and to try to restore Milford Pond for boating, fishing, and other recreational activities. Since that time, your Restoration Committee has been working very diligently and cautiously over twenty-one years with many professionals, local, state, and federal officials to develop a sound, cost-effective, and scientifically proven method dredging to achieve the goals of the Pond project. We need to thank the following individuals and boards for all their support and counsel. Boards of Selectmen, past and present members, Brian Murray and William Buckley, the town meeting members, the Finance Committee, the Financial Department heads and town administrators, the Capital Improvement Committee, and the Conservation Commission, Congressman Richard Neal, who made this initiative his number-one environmental priority in his district, the United States Corps Corpse of Engineers, former State Representative Marie Parenti, State Senator Richard Moore, State Representative John Fernandes. I believe most people realize that protecting our environment, our water and aquifer, preserving our lakes, ponds, and streams are vital to a community's well-being and will enable our children and future generations to enjoy the benefits of this natural resource. Mr. Moderator, with your permission and the permission of town meeting, I'd like to invite Mr. Tom Jenkins, project engineer, to address the body. Thank you.
I understand Mr. Jenkins is not a registered voter in the town of Milford, therefore would require unanimous consent to address the meeting. Does anyone object to hearing for Mr. Jenkins? Hearing, no objections.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, if you'll just give me just a second here. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, town meeting members. Once again, my name is Tom Jenkins, I'm a professional engineer, I work with- I work with GZA, Geo-Environmental. Our office is, our headquarters is in Norwood. My office is in Springfield. I've had the pleasure of providing consulting engineering services to the Town of Milford since 1994, often on, mostly on. I was the engineer of record for the Godfrey Brook Flood Mitigation Program that was constructed in 2000, and I've been involved in the Milford Pond Project since 1996. So, one of our specialties is lake and pond restoration, especially as related to dredging, and we do a lot of that type of work for state agencies in various cities and towns throughout Massachusetts and Connecticut as well, but mostly Massachusetts. And we've helped scores of towns realize their goals of a restored water body. And I always tell towns whenever I get involved with them early on is that this process will take a lot longer than you have ever imagined it will take. And if you lose focus for any length of time, your project will die. And I've been long impressed by the Town of Milford's focus and dedication and perseverance as they've carried this project forward for the last, well, as Dino said, since 1991, but I've been involved since '96, so that's all I can talk about. Cedar Swamp Pond, Milford Pond, I took a look at some aerial photographs. I was looking, I had to look really hard. In this photograph from 2010, you can't even see the pond, but it's, as you know, it's right in the center of town. I went back to 2001, I was able to find a photograph. Now, as we all know, this is because the vegetation dies down in the wintertime, and that's when that picture from 2001 was taken. But the point is real, that you have a substantial pond in the center of town surrounded by recreational and cultural uses that is threatening to not become a pond, or to become something other than a pond if something is not done. And that's the fate of all water bodies, is to become an upland area over time. Cedar Swamp Pond, Milford Pond, was taken in 1930s, late '30s as a WPA project. I don't know if you can see the plan, but it was constructed, the dam was constructed across the Charles River and flooded Cedar Swamp Pond to a depth of about five or six feet. This is a picture of the dam from 1978. It looks pretty much the same, but it's vegetation upstream and downstream of the dam. All reports are, I wasn't around here then, but all reports are in the '40s, '50s, and '60s that it was a true recreational paradise with boating, fishing, swimming, hockey, ice skating in the wintertime. As you know, it rarely freezes hard enough now because of the shallow depth and the vegetation growth, hardly freezes deeply enough to enable a good hockey game. But from the '40s, '50s, and '60s, by the time we get into the mid-'70s, things started to go a little bit haywire with infill and from sedimentation and pollutants from nutrients such as phosphorus and nitrogen, primarily weed growth, but also sedimentation within the pond. This prompted the town to reach out and look at options for reclamation of Cedar Swamp Pond. This study was done in 1979, and the recommendation of that study was dredging. Subsequent to that, there was a 1986 EPA-funded study, Diagnostic Study of the Lake, to determine what its problems were, and then what they call a feasibility study to determine, or to make recommendations for how can we bring this back to some reasonable semblance of a lake or pond. The recommendation of that study was dredging. Shortly after this was when, as the Selectmen mentioned, or the Chairman of the Restoration Committee mentioned, a group of citizens came before the Selectmen and requested that a Restoration Committee be formed. In 1998, there was a state grant given, and that enabled the town to hire Bay State Environmental Consultants to design and permit a dredging program for Milford Pond, and that's when I became involved. I said '96 earlier, but it was actually '98. Made a mistake. Subsequent to that getting started, there was a dredging program that was originally conceived. It was a 30-acre plan. We took that to the Capital Planning Committee, who urged that we'd be a little bit more ambitious. We came up with a 45-acre plan, 400,000 cubic yards. That's a lot of material. Just to put it in layperson's terms, that is a pile of dirt the size of a football field, almost 300 feet high. So began the initial permitting, and so began the search for money. This program conceived of the project as a hydraulic dredging project. Now, what that does is, it does not lower the water level. It maintains the normal pool while the work is being done. It uses a barge-mounted dredge with a below-water cutter head. It looks like a giant snow blower. It pumps the sediment, it chews it up and pumps it along with the water to an area for de-watering. And the nice thing about it is it eliminates impacts to the pond margin that might be caused by lowering the water level. One of the things about Milford Pond is, in some areas of the pond, you've got about 50 or 60 feet of peat. Even if we were able to drain it and start trying to get out there in the bottom with equipment, it would never support the equipment that you would need to do the dredging. So it's really the right methodology for this pond, and it also has the benefit of eliminating any downstream impacts. Shortly after this, we had a meeting here at Town Hall with Congressman Neal, the Senator and the former representative, and various town officials, and everybody pledged, and that's when Congressman Neal said he was going to make this his number-one priority. He asked for some additional information, and he put the town in contact with the Corps of Engineers. We had an initial meeting with the Corps of Engineers in June of 2001. They explained to the town that they have a continuing authority program that's under Section 206 of the Water Resources Act of 1996. What it basically says is that the Corps of Engineers can undertake projects that will restore aquatic ecosystems and habitat for fish and wildlife. They do a lot of things like dam removal that you can see in a picture here. They also do lake and pond restoration projects. The projects have to be in the public interest, and they have to be cost-effective, and they're limited to a 500, excuse me, a $5 million federal contribution. And the way it works is it's 35% non-federal money, 65% federal cost share, up to that $5 million cap for their participation. So Congressman Neal put the town in contact with the Corps of Engineers about this program. They took it on, and they began their own evaluation of the project. They had to do their feasibility studies, their environmental assessments, their incremental cost-benefit analysis. As I mentioned earlier, these projects have to be cost-effective. They did some preliminary permitting with the Department of Environmental Protection, and they came up with various options for the restoration of the pond. And the cost ranges were in the $9 million to $15 million range. And now, these were judged by the Restoration Committee as being cost-prohibitive. Don't forget there was a $5 million federal cap. So we're talking $5 million for the town, $5 million for the federal. It seemed a little over-aggressive. The biggest issue was what to do with the sediment, how to dispose or reuse the sediment. The sediment is clean, so that's not an issue, but you think about that pile of dirt that I was mentioning, and what are you going to do with that? How are you going to get rid of it? Where are you going to place it? And that's what most of this cost was involved in. Now, recently, about a year ago, year and a half ago, the Corps came up with a new alternative that really helped save the day. Their proposal is to use the dredge materials to create an area of high-quality wetlands in the northern portions of the pond. This method is cost-effective. They've done it in a lot of other places in the country. It's realistic, it's scientifically proven. The great thing is it saves a lot on the sediment de-watering and disposal costs. This picture shows the pond. This is the area that is proposed to be dredged. It's a half a mile long, 20 acres in size, about 200 to 600 feet wide, and the proposal is to place the sediments in an area up here in this part of the pond, which is right now only about a foot deep anyway. It's about a 26-acre wetland area and a 20-acre pond dredging. You may have seen, oh, I should mention that this current plan accomplishes all of the goals of the Restoration Committee and the Corps of Engineers program. This is the current plan. You may have seen some of these posters that's in the handout tonight. It's pretty much the same thing I just showed you, but it has the area to be dredged and then the area to be created wetlands with the sediments. Should mention that this plan has been vetted with the Environmental Regulatory Committee. We had a meeting here in May of 2011 to present the project. It was very well-received. The Corps of Engineers has now to go back and retool their environmental assessment to reflect this new project approach. All right, let's get down to the bottom line. The revised project cost estimate is now a little over $5 million, and that's total cost for the entire project. The split would be 3.3 million federal money from the Corps of Engineers and 1.8 million what the Corps of Engineers calls non-federal money, and that is the part that, they don't care where you come up with it, but that's what the town's responsibility would be. The next steps, and that's where we are right now, the next steps are to execute what's called the Project Partnership Agreement, and that's really the agreement between the Corps of Engineers and this non-federal sponsor. The non-federal sponsor at that point, when they sign that agreement, will need to come up with $300,000, $301,000. And what that represents is the Corps of Engineers has invested almost a million dollars of their own money, well, it's all of our money, but of their programmatic money, so far into this project. Once the Project Partnership Agreement is signed, then the non-federal sponsor is immediately responsible for the 35% of what project monies have already been spent. Does that make sense? So that would require cash installment right at the time of the signing. After that, the Corps of Engineers would finalize the construction documents and the federal permitting, and the non-federal sponsor would need to finalize the state and local permitting. This is the current schedule. I believe it's in your handout, but basically, we're right here at the town meeting vote. If this passes, the town would enter into the partnership agreement. The Corps of Engineers would finish the plans and specifications and finish the permitting, put together the construction documents, and the intention is to go out to bid toward the end of the calendar year 2014. It's possible that that could be accelerated. You can't do dredging in the wintertime, so it really doesn't matter. We're looking at a construction start in the first quarter of 2015. Wanted to mention that, just to kind of make sure everything was in order, we went down to the State House back in March. We met with the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, asked for his support. Senator Moore was there, Representative Fernandes was there. He spoke very favorably of the project and indicated he would give his full support wherever he was able to. We also had a meeting with the Corps of Engineers back here at the town in August, just to make sure that, in preparation for this meeting, to make sure that the Corps of Engineers was still behind the plan, still felt confident with the plan. They are certainly ready. They feel the plan is reasonable, functional, scientifically proven, and they would love to move forward with this project, provided that the town is willing to partner with them. We received a follow-up letter from the Corps of Engineers September 26, basically confirming their thoughts about the project. We've met with the Board of Selectmen, Capital Improvement Committee, I said Capital Planning Committee, I didn't realize that was an old term, the Finance Committee, and the Conservation Commission here in town within the last couple of months, bringing everybody up to speed. I wanted to close with saying that, you know, I really feel that the Town of Milford is on the five-yard line, and I don't think the town will ever be this close again to getting this project accomplished. It is a long-drawn-out process. The town's been at it for 20 years. You have the Corps of Engineers engaged now, ready to move forward. The permitting for this type of work is becoming more and more difficult every year. It's even changed. While this process has been going on in the design of this project, the costs are continuing to rise. I think you have to ask yourself, you know, what do you want to have happen to Milford Pond, and what do you want future generations to see when they are down there using Plains Field, or Fino Field, or using the bike path, or any of those other great things in that area? Now, the article tonight would allow, if it's passed, would allow the Town of Milford to sign the Project Partnership Agreement with the Corps of Engineers, basically become partners with the Corps of Engineers on this project. For the town to sign that PPA, they would immediately require the $301,000 payment, but the town has to make the commitment on the entire 1.8 million in order to sign that agreement, because it is a commitment for the entire thing. But the important part of that is, yes, $301,000 would be due immediately, but the remainder would not be due unless and until the Corps of Engineers actually goes to construction. So you're on the hook, but only if it goes to construction. I believe that's it.
Does any other vote yet to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Mike Viscanti from Precinct 8. Town meeting members, I move to amend the previous motion in the following way. Excuse me. Once again, I move to amend the previous motion in the following way, by deleting the words "the sum of $1,800,000" and replacing those with the words "the sum of $500,000".
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded that, in the motion, the sum of $1,800,000 is deleted and replaced with the sum of $500,000. Vote yet to be heard in the amendment to the motion. Mr. Viscanti.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my understanding is that this is a 500, I'm sorry, a $5 million project, 3 million of which is federally funded, the other roughly 2 million is to be funded mutually by state and local. Why are we, why are we being asked to appropriate the entire, almost the entire $2 million? Are we assuming that we're getting nothing from the state? If we approve $1.8 million on this article, we can rest assured that the state will not give us a dime. They're going to say, "Look, you've already appropriated everything you need. You don't need any money from the state." We will lose every opportunity we have to get any kind of state funding for this project. It's supposed to be $2 million funded jointly from the town and the state. Why should Milford have to come up with the entire $2 million? We should not have to. If the amendment is passed, that I propose, which is for $500,000, that will give us the $300,000 that I believe we need now, and then have the, with $200,000 buffer, should be plenty to get started. I believe nobody has even approached the state yet for their part of the $2 million. Why, I don't know. We need to get on the state to give us their share of the $2 million. Please, vote to pass this amendment for the $500,000, and we'll get the rest of the money from the state, as was indicated by the previous speaker. Thank you very much.
Any vote yet to be heard on the amendment to the motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Dipartolmas.
Town meeting members, I can appreciate the previous speaker's comments. The way we drafted this particular article is the way that it has to go at this point. The 1.8 is our responsibility. The $301,000 is needed in a few months so that the Army Corps of Engineers can finish it, and it'll be shovel-ready. We have been corresponding with the state officials for probably a couple of years now, probably four years. As Tom said, back in March, we met with the Secretary of Environmental Affairs under the governor. State Representative Fernandes was there, State Senator Richard Moore was there, other individuals. individuals, and we continue to fight and we continue to ask for appropriation from the state. I don't want to be disingenuous with you. We continue to lobby. As a matter of fact, in the past three weeks, we've sent a letter to the governor. I'll be sending something to the Lieutenant Governor Murray. And so, the hope is that if the town meeting is able to appropriate tonight 1.8 million, that anything we receive from the state will be offset from 1.8. When we went in and spoke with the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, he was impressed with what the town of Milford has done thus far. He asked me, what are you looking for from the town of Milford? I said, well, secretary, I said, you know, if we could split the 1.8, and he started laughing. And I thought I had said something incorrectly, and he said, well, usually, most people come in and they want the whole thing. But in the case that you're asking, you're already asking for half. And he said that he would do whatever he could to try to assist the town of Milford, working with the governor and all that. So respectfully, we have to appropriate the 1.8 for our portion. And then, the Restoration Commission Committee and the Selectmen and everyone else will do whatever we can to try to obtain something from the state, and hopefully, we can receive a few hundred thousand dollars, whatever the case may be, and that'll be decreased from 1.8. We've come a long way. We've worked very hard. Your Restoration Commission Committee has worked, like I said, over 21 years. This is something for future generations, and we've come so close that I think that it's the right way to go for future generations, it's for our children, and this is something that we can be most proud, like we have been with the Plains Park, the bike trail, what the park commissioners did with the Plains Park. So all these things, I think, are good for the town of Milford, and especially for the kids who'll be following us over the next decade, two decades, three decades. This project will be good for at least 50 years or more, probably 80 years. And so, the costs keep going up, the permitting process, as Tom said, becomes more stringent, and if the town really wants to do something, you know, now's the time to do it, and I'd appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Viscanti.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Mike Viscanti, Precinct 8. I'm confused. Why would we appropriate 1.8 million when we have no idea what the state is going to fund us? The previous speaker alluded to the fact that the 1.8 million is our share. The 1.8 is not our share. The 1.8 is a combined share of the state and the town. Our share should be 500,000, the balance coming from the state. Please, I urge you to support the amendment and not the 1.8 million. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Solazi. Mr. Solazi.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I think Mr. DeBartolomay is suffering this evening in this particular point, because we urged him to be as he always and only as he can be, completely honest. One of the previous speakers was concerned about writing letters and seeking monies from the state. I remember when we had Senator Travellini down at the Italian Vets, I believe, some few years ago, I believe he was the Senate President at the time, he pledged his full support for this project, and then he immediately took a job in the private sector and left. The chairman of the Restoration Committee is being completely honest with you this evening. I do not believe that there will be any state aid forthcoming. They are telling you they are seeking the 1.8 million from us, and I think, after 21 years, I think they deserve the entire Restoration Committee to vote this evening on the merits of that, whether you decide it's a good project or a bad project. I happen to believe it's a good project. You'll make your own decision. I personally have written letters on the committee's behalf, at Mr. DeBartolomay's direction, to many state officials, seeking additional funding. Again, I don't believe it's forthcoming. If it does come down the road, that'll reduce our costs later. As Tom said previously, this is a project whose time has come either to push it over the goal line or push it away from us forever, and the price is 1.8. There's no lying, there's no fibbing, that's it, that's our cost. So again, I would ask you to decide on the merits and what you see fit. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion, which is to reduce the sum of $1,800,000 to the sum of $500,000? Precinct 4. I'm sorry? Motion to be made to move the previous question, which is an attempt to shut off debate, requires a two-thirds vote and is not debatable. All those in favor of moving the previous question will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1.
13 in favor, 2 opposed.
Precinct 1, 13 in favor, 2 opposed. Precinct 2.
19 in favor, none opposed.
Precinct 2, 19 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 3.
15 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 3, reports 15 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 4.
14 in favor, none opposed.
Precinct 4, reports 14 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 5.
15 in favor, 1 opposed.
Precinct 5, reports 15 in favor, 1 opposed. Precinct 6.
21 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 6, reports 21 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 7.
15 in favor, 1 opposed.
Precinct 7, reports 15 in favor, 1 opposed. Precinct 8.
16 in favor, 2 opposed.
Precinct 8, reports 16 in favor, 2 opposed. At large.
10 in favor, 1 opposed.
At large, 10 in favor, 1 opposed. 138, having voted in the affirmative, 7 in the negative. The motion to move the previous question on the amendment to the motion is passed. The question will now come on the amendment to the motion, which is to delete the sum of $1,800,000 and replace it with the sum of $500,000. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion manifest by saying aye.
Ayes.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The amendment to the motion is defeated. Does any vote to care to be heard on the motion?
Mr. Arcuti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Arcuti, Precinct 6. It is definitely a worthwhile project. I can remember when I was a kid going down that area, it's about time we brought it back. One question I have for the engineer, from the dam to East Main Street, that waterway, is that going to be restored?
If, he cares to answer?
No, that's not a part of the project. The project stops at the dam.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion?
I have a question for the engineering study. I have a question for the engineer on this project. When you show the movement of the sediment from one section of the pond to the other section of the pond, it would seem to me that just by natural occurrence that the rainwater and other things driven down from over the years would just simply slide the sediment right back into where we took it out from. Also, just from hydraulic pressure alone, we're talking about taking the equivalent of Patriot Stadium and sticking it on the backside of the pond, and then hoping against hope, without some kind of mitigation, that it's not going to simply press itself down and push itself all the way down into the restored area. The other thing I question is the timing of this project. We just completed the athletic field for the high school, and now we're looking at the, you know, the reconstruction of the new woodland school. It seems kind of inappropriate to then throw 1.8 million out there to restore Milford Pond when we have just completed a very large project, and now we're going to try to do another very large project, and then to ask people, say, here, here's $2 million to restore a pond. Sure, I'd love to see the pond, you know, for recreational purposes, for boating and other things, but we have a project already on the works that's much more important. That's the restoration and rebuilding of the woodland schools, and I think that maybe at this time, this is not the appropriate project to go forward with at this time.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Burrielli.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen and town meeting members, that's an interesting argument, but if we had followed it consistently over the last 20 years, we probably wouldn't have had any of our major projects built in this town. One of the great things about the town is that people realize that certain areas of the town need a little TLC from time to time, and we're a little biased in this precinct since Milford Pond is in our precinct and has been sadly neglected for year after year after year. On any given day, if you go down there in the summer, it's impossible to get near the pond because of the smell of it, and there's a lot of people who live in that area, in all the Plains area, and even on the other side toward Birmingham Court where the elderly housing is. My one question would be, you know, it didn't take this pond, this happened because of years of neglect and overlooking things. We just want to make sure that if we do this and expend the money, that there are continuing efforts to make sure that some of the things that have been described don't happen again. And I think we have to be alert to make sure that the problems that occurred don't. But I think, I think this is a great project. I think it's long overdue, and the fact is, Dino and his committee have been working on this for decades. It's certainly, you know, not an easy project, and the 1.8 will cement our commitment to do it, and I'd urge the town meeting members to do it. It's helping, yes, one section of the town, but it's also helping a major recreational area. We did this with the bike paths, we did this with the plain fields, we do with all the great fields all over town so that all elements of the community can benefit. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Vote from Precinct 1.
Bob Nashawati from Precinct 1, Dilla Street. My mother was one of the first of 26 local residents that approached the Selectmen because we live right on the pond. The pond was out our door, out our windows, in our backyard. I grew up playing there, and she was one of the first original families that said to the Selectmen, we need to do something about this pond. There's definitely neglect, the weeds, the water, animals. Let's get this pond fixed. So for 30 years, I've grown up alongside that pond as well as our family. Now, I'm psyched that there's money from the federal government here now to partner with this pond, to get this pond refreshed and reconditioned, although I do have a question for the engineers about, you know, what they're doing with the sediment. They're taking it, I mean, and clear it on the graph, they're taking it from one end, and they're putting it all on the northwest corner in that large cove where there's more than a dozen, you know, residents that have town, I'm sorry, that have butt the water right there at the town. And I just wanted to see, is that set in stone where the sediment is going to be dumped? The amount of volume that you're talking about putting there, is there a place where that, on more of the town property, that the town waters edge could be built out for more recreational uses, like extensions of the park over in Plains, over in Plains Park? It sounds like there's a lot of opportunity available to use that sediment and just to dump it in our backyard. It doesn't seem all that fair to all of us who started this project, saying, let's have a better pond for all of us. I feel like the Dilla Street side is definitely going to be suffering with all this debris that either causes even more foul smells or anything worse coming from as being the dump of all this extra sediment. So I'd like to see if there is a plan in place, or if there is openness to additional places where the sediment can be disposed, or at least start to use the sediment and dispose around areas that are not abutting or are part of the property of Milford Town residents. Thank you for your time.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Tom, raise your hand.
Mr. Nero.
One of our members just raised some very practical questions, and they haven't been responded to. If you might envision the pond as being that screen behind us, my understanding, the top is the north, the bottom is the south, we're going to dig a 12-foot hole across the bottom, we're going to dump 400,000 cubic yards of fill, plus, it's filled to capacity already right below the surface. You don't have to be an engineer or a simple genius to understand, isn't all of that loose muck and debris over a period of, a very short period of time, going to fill the 12-foot hole? And if it is, we might as well take the $5 million bucks down to the restroom downstairs.
Any other, Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you for the comments. Those are both really good questions, actually. I believe I spoke with Mr. Nashawati's father Sunday afternoon, he had the same question. What I said to him was, is that, well, first of all, that we appreciate the questions and the comments, but second of all, the Corps of Engineers has taken this, at this point, to the level of being a conceptual design. They've done enough of this so that they know from a technical standpoint that this will work. They realize that, from an environmental standpoint, there are still issues to be addressed. That's why they had a meeting here back in May of 2011 to present this concept to the regulatory agencies to get their concurrence, and they did get concurrence. What needs to happen now is for the Corps of Engineers to start taking this concept and working out the actual details of it. What is the actual configuration? What is the planarmetric shape and form, and where exactly in the pond will this area be? That's all happens during schematic design, design development, preliminary design, and then final design. And I urge Mr. Nashawati to let his comments be known to the Restoration Committee as this project goes forward, should it go forward, because all of those comments can and should be addressed, and it's early in the process, in the final design process now, early enough to address all of those. The Corps of Engineers is not doing any work on this project now because they've run out of money. They need someone to sign the Project Partnership Agreement so that it can move forward and continue through this design process. I am not the designer on the project, but I do know enough about this stuff to be able to tell you that through the sediment de-watering process, there's no chance of this material migrating back into the hole that it came out of. The material will be de-watered, it does have strength, and when it is de-watered, it will not be subject to any type of sloughing or movement back into the dredged area.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Antonio.
Joe DiAntonio, Precinct 2. Let me take you back to another time, around 1939. I was about 12 years old. My job then, I'd go down to my father's gadding, get one of the bean poles, my mother would give me about 12 feet of line. I would go down in the cellar, one of my father's empty gallons of wine with the cock on top, I would take that, get a hook, dig some worms, and I'd go over to Milford Pond and fish and enjoy myself, and I'd bring home six or eight beautiful hornpouch, and we could eat the fish that came from there, because I think they call them catfish these days. But it was a jewel. I grew up with that jewel. I grew up with the neighbors all along the pond who have been suffering. I grew up with the neighbors all along the pond who have been suffering. Some of those families have been there for 90 years and they need relief. And this committee, we have Dino, whose work, the Finance Committee, the Capital Improvement Committee, the Board of Selectmen. What are we questioning so badly for? I say we should pass this and Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
A motion been made and seconded to move the previous question and attempt to shut off debate requires a two-thirds vote and is not debatable. All those in favor of moving the previous question will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1. Precinct 1 reports 17 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2 reports 19 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 3. Precinct 3 reports 14 in favor, one opposed. Precinct 4. Precinct 4 reports 14 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 5. Precinct 5 reports 18 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6 reports 20 in favor, zero opposed. Precinct 7. Precinct 7 reports 16 in favor, zero opposed. Precinct 8. Precinct 8 reports 16 in favor, two opposed. At large? At large, 13 in favor, none opposed. 147, 147 having voted in the affirmative, three in the negative, the necessary two-thirds has been acquired to move the previous question. Question now comes upon the motion that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $1,800,000, said some to be utilized to design a, to dredge a portion of Milford Pond to reestablish deep water habitat for aquatic species and provide recreational fishing and boating benefits, such dredging to consist of an area of approximately 20 acres in the southern portion of the pond to a depth of approximately 12 feet using hydraulic dredging, dredging systems. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. Article 15. Mr. Akoudi.
Got it? Okay. Mr. Akoudi. Just a bunch of, pull the drop down. We're going to get one of those too. Hold on, I got to concentrate. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $35,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Park Commission for the purpose of the purchase of a new truck.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $35,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Park Commission for the purpose of purchase of a new truck. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Akoudi.
The truck that we're replacing is a 22-year-old truck. It has reached the end of its useful life, so we're looking to purchase a new truck. And also with the purchase, we're also going to be purchasing a plow attachment to help with the snow removal during the winter for the highway department. I urge you to vote favorable on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Question now comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Fire Chief Tui.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $450,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new fire engine to replace Engine 5.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to transfer the sum of $450,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new fire engine to replace Engine 5. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Selectmen also unanimously support this article. Chief Tui.
Ladies and gentlemen, what we're looking to do is replace a 25-year-old piece of fire apparatus. The National Fire Protection Association, one of the bodies that sets the standards for fire apparatus and, and fire standards, fire safety standards, recommends a useful life of no more than 25 years. The actual, the primary useful life is expected to be 10 to 15 years. So we've gotten our money's worth out of this vehicle. It has a lot of body corrosion on it. It's had some maintenance issues coming up, so it's time to replace this vehicle and we urge your support. Thank you.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $480,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized for the installation of new windows in Milford Town Hall.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to transfer the sum of $480,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized for the installation of new windows in Milford Town Hall. Finance Committee, recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports Article 17. Any vote to care to be heard? Selectman Murray.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as you're aware, the town has made a significant effort towards maintaining this, this building. This entire upstairs has been refinished with the floor. Currently, we're undergoing another round of repainting. Downstairs, of course, was totally refurbished quite some time ago. The windows are a very important item. This article would seek to replace over 85 windows that exist throughout the building. It includes a bid prediction for materials and labor. I would ask for your support.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 18. Mr. Cannelly.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 4.1 definitions of the zoning bylaw as follows. By deleting the definition of the following word phrases, building, structure, yard, front... Yes.
Okay, I'll first of all ask, Mr. Cannelly, is it exactly as appears in the warrant that everyone has? There are no changes, right? Motion been made. Do we dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motion since it's exactly as appears in your warrant? Any vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the Planning Board have report?
Pursuant to Mass General Act, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on September 4th, 2012 regarding the subject of Article 18, at which time it voted unanimous to recommend town meeting approval. Article 18 updates the definitions of building, structure, yard, front, yard rear, and yard side. The Planning Board recommends that Article 18 be adopted as printed in the warrant. Essentially, the Planning Board is proposing Article 18 to provide better clarity in the application of these terms in the administration of the zoning bylaw. The definitions for building and structures are being conformed to the State Building Code. The updated definitions for the various types of yards will clarify the current confusion language by relating them only to specific property lines. The Planning Board urges your adoption of Article 8 as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Viscanti. I'm sorry. Article 18, yes.
Town meeting members. Mr. Moderator, thank you. Mike Viscanti, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the previous motion by adding after, under the, under the topic of definitions, by adding after building, after any, inserting any permanently attached structure to a, to a permanent concrete foundation.
May I see the motion, the amendment to motion? It's got to be in writing, you know. Can you, I'll give you, why don't we research, research for no more than two minutes to give Mr. Viscanti the opportunity to put that in writing? You can carry on a conversation now. We're still with your neighbor. Okay, you're going to add after building? Let me understand this. All right, we're back in session. The, Mr. Viscanti has amended the motion by adding after the word building, he has added the following phrase, any, any permanently attached structure to a concrete foundation used or intended, before used, used. All right, so after the word building in the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw, he's going to add the phrase or the words, any permanently attached structure to a concrete foundation. Used, and then it would follow by used or intended for, for supporting or sheltering any use or occupancy. Any vote which to be heard on the amendment to motion? Mr. Viscanti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The purpose of this amendment is to clearly define what a building is. This would, the, passing of this amendment would, would prevent temporary makeshift structures such as canopies or little tents being called or classified as buildings. This, this also relates back to a couple of articles previous to this one where you approved an article regarding unregistered vehicles. The way it stands now, if somebody had an unregistered vehicle...
Can't talk about unregistered vehicles. We're going to talk about structures. No, you can't talk about unregistered vehicles within the scope of this article.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, a, 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 a permanent, a building, it, it, it goes to this article, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry?
Goes to this amendment. And helps define the purpose of it. I'm not really speaking about that, that article in and of itself regarding the unregistered vehicles. In any case, this would eliminate the possibility of, of a temporary tent-style structure or makeshift canopy being erected and called a building. Because if it is called a building under, under the guidelines as in the original article, then that opens up a whole other, another whole can of worms relative to the prior article I was speaking about that I am, that the moderator has ruled that I cannot speak about. So this would, this would, in any case, this would clear it up and more clearly defines what a building is. And, and if this amendment is passed, you will not see Tent City show up on, on your, in your neighborhood. I urge you to approve this amendment. Thank you very much.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Cannelly.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's not look into this any deeper than really how it's written. This is marrying the Massachusetts State Building Code. And what we're trying to do is simplify. And again, if you read it as it is written, any structure used or intended for supporting or sheltering or any use of occupancy, there's nothing more that you have, you don't have to attach it to concrete or anything else because it's clearly written for its intended use. Like I said, what we're trying to do is make things less confusing and more streamlined in correlation to the Mass State Building Codes. And I urge you to vote in favor of the article as submitted. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Viscanti.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Mike Viscanti, Precinct 8. Relative to the previous speaker's comments, I respectfully submit to you that we have to be specific when we're talking about a building as indicated in that article. If we are not specific in the article, then it opens it up for interpretation and we cannot allow it to be interpreted in a way other than what it is intended to be. If, 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 as the previous speaker said, it refers back to the Mass Building Code, then why would it even be in this, in this article? It's in there because we want to define a building. And to define a building, the amendment clearly defines it as a permanent structure. Without the amendment, I could hold an umbrella up outside my door and say, I'm in a, I'm under a building. building. Please, vote to approve this amendment. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Duzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I guess I'm not prepared, allowed to talk on the Milford Pond project, but I would have loved to. In any event, as I read this article, it says building, any structure, and then the next sentence down, structure, which defines the building, and it's that which is built or constructed. An umbrella or a tent is not built or constructed, it's erected. So I think the bylaw as written is clear, and it's not ambiguous. So I urge you to vote against the amendment.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? One more chance, Mr. Visconti, and that's it.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members.
Mr. Visconti has the floor.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, relative to the previous speaker's comments, erection, construction, what's the difference? Tomatoes, tomatoes, okay? Means nothing. The amendment clearly defines what a building is. It's not open for interpretation. Anybody in here can look at something and decide if this amendment, amendment is passed, whether or not it is a building or a makeshift tent or canopy that somebody has just stuck in their yard. Please, vote to approve this amendment. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? If not, the question comes upon the amendment to the motion. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The amendment to the motion is defeated. Any vote to care to be heard on the motion as presented? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented to amend the zoning bylaw as far as section point, four point one definitions. It's an amendment to the zoning bylaw, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the, of the motion will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct one reports thirteen in favor and none opposed. Precinct two.
Twelve in favor, two opposed.
Precinct two reports twelve in favor, two opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three reports thirteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct four.
Thirteen in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct four reports thirteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct five.
Sixteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct five reports sixteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct six.
Fifteen in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct six reports fifteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct seven.
Fourteen in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct seven reports fourteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct eight.
Fifteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct eight reports fifteen in favor, one opposed. At large.
Twelve in favor, none opposed.
At large reports twelve in favor, none opposed. I got one twenty-three and four. I may be wrong. One hundred twenty-three having voted in the affirmative, four in the negative, the necessary two-thirds has been acquired and the motion is passed. Article nineteen. Mr. Shane.
Mr. Moderator, move we pass over Article nineteen?
Motion made in second, we pass over Article eighteen. A motion to pass over is an attempt to take no action on the motion or on the article that was inserted in the warrant. It's debatable. Does any vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article nineteen. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion to pass over is carried unanimously. Article twenty, Town Council, Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Said sum to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen and the Legal Department for review and expert witness services in relation to any Milford Water Company applications to the Department of Public Utilities seeking increased rates for water in Milford.
Motion made in second that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen and the Legal Department for review and expert witness services in relation to any Milford Water Company application to the Department of Public Utilities seeking increased rates for water in Milford. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable, the Board of Selectmen supports this article unanimously. Town Council, Moody.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think as you all know, when this was written, we used the word any because we didn't know precisely when or what our company would be seeking an increase or what it would be. We were led to believe they would be seeking a fifty percent increase, which was enough to want to prepare and fight and oppose that anywhere we can. But now we know what they are going to seek, and they've actually filed with the DPU, and it's for, as you probably know, eighty-two point seven percent increase in their rates. This is two years after a thirty-three percent increase in their rates. It's an incredible level to seek. It's going to take a very, very large effort to oppose it and try to minimize it to the greatest extent we can. I can do a lot by myself as council for the town, but I need experts. We need experts to be able to oppose this. The Water Company will be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on experts to support their case in order to extract about four million dollars additional from you, the ratepayers. We can use the thirty-five thousand dollars to try to minimize that effort to the extent possible, so I strongly urge you to support this article.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-one. Administrator, Mr. Slazey.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars from the Selectmen's General Expense Account, number one four eight five three zero zero, to the School Department Personal Services Account, number three hundred dash five one one zero. Both is voted under Article Four of the May twenty-first, two thousand twelve Annual Town Meeting, which sum represents the general government share of the IT Director's salary.
Motion made in second that the town vote to transfer the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars from the Selectmen's General Expense Account, number one four eight dash five three zero zero, to the School Department's Personal Services Account, number three zero zero dash five one one zero. Both is voted under Article Four of the May twenty-one, two thousand twelve Annual Town Meeting, which sum represents the general government share of the IT Director's salary. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable, Selectmen are supporting this unanimously. Mr. Slazey.
Mr. Moderator, town, town meeting members, this seeks, this seeks no new money. This is an annual housekeeping article necessitated by the fact that a few years ago, the town decided to share the IT position sixty percent paid by the school committee, School Department, and forty percent by general government. This just shifts the money over to them as we've done the last few years. Thank you.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried, is carried. Article twenty-two. Selectman Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be utilized for the purchase of a new van for the Animal Control Department.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be utilized to purchase a new van for the Ant, Milford Animal Control Department. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
The Selectmen obviously support this. Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article seeks to fund the purchase for a new animal control van. It's a two thousand one vehicle. It has over ninety thousand miles and has reached the end of its useful life. Its maintenance costs are beginning to climb, and with that, the Capital Improvement Committee and the FinCom have voted favorably, and this is supported by the Selectmen to replace this at this time. Thank you very much.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-three. Mr. Rizzo.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that town vote to appropriate the sum of money in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, excuse me, to spend under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health to purchase a pickup truck that's been used at the transfer facility or any other purposes deemed necessary by the Board of Health.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health to purchase a pickup truck to be used at the transfer facility and for other purposes deemed necessary by the Board of Health. Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable, Selectmen are non-committed on this one. Mr. Rizzo.
Town meeting members, this is to replace the present truck we have down there, it's twenty-five years old, twenty years old. If you look at the truck going down the road, you see the front end going one way, the rear end going the other way. We have a bent frame, the front end is falling apart, so it's time.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-four. Selectman Buckley.
No. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, thank you.
I'm sorry, Selectman DeBertolomayes.
Article twenty-four, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to repair, replace the roof of the Milford Police Station.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to repair or replace the roof at the Milford Police Station. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable, Selectmen are supporting this as presenting the motion. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. DeBertolomayes.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this article seeks the sum of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to replace the roof, actually, there are two roofs at the Milford Police Station. The roof has become increasingly worse during the last three years. We've had a local roofer continuously patching the roof to carry us through, but now the problem is widespread with water causing electrical problems with paint and ceiling concerns. The project has to be put out to bid, as you know. A breakdown would be to estimate to replace the low-slope roof on the rear portion of the Milford Police Headquarters. Estimate would be a hundred and forty-two thousand. Estimate to replace the shingle roof and rubber product on the front portion of the Milford Police Station is another seventy-five thousand dollars. A local sheet metal company provided a quotation to replace the ductwork and installation on the roof, ninety-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Contingent fee is forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Architect design phase bid documents thirty-five thousand. The total, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. The roof is almost twenty years old. The chief has done everything possible. Matter of fact, I just spoke to him tonight, I believe he said there were like forty leaks throughout the police station when it rained. So this is something that has to be done to protect the investment, and we would appreciate your consideration on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Shane. The motion as presented is to, that the town vote to transfer the sum of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to repair and replace the roof of the Milford Police Station. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to raise and appropriate from, transfer from excess and deficiency, as was evaluated by the Finance Committee and the town accountant and the town treasurer.
So you're amending the motion to delete excess and deficiency and to raise and appropriate? I'm sorry? Can we put that in writing just to? The substituted motion is the town vote to transfer, to raise and appro- to transfer the sum of three hundred and, to raise and appropriate or transfer the sum of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars? No? You don't want to transfer, you want to raise and appropriate. Okay? Motion now reads that the town vote to, to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, said sum to utilize to repair and replace the roof of the Milford Police Station. Any vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, raise and appropriate comes off of the levy, transfer comes out of free cash. We, we prefer it to come off the levy at this point in time.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to amend. All those in favor of the motion to amend manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion now has been amended. Any vote to care to be heard on the motion as amended, which is that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized to repair and replace the roof at the Milford Police Station? If not, the question comes upon the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-five. A lot of reading there, Patrick.
I'm waiting for Jerry. I moved that the town vote, I moved that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw to prohibit for solar, to provide, excuse me, for solar energy system as follows by adding-
Have there been any changes to what is in the warrant, Mr. Connolly? No, there are not. Any vote to care to be heard on the motion to dispense with the reading of the motion since it's exactly as appears in the warrant? Not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion to dispense is carried. Does the Planning Board have a report?
Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Five, the Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on September fourth, two thousand and twelve regarding the subject of Article Twenty-five, at which time it voted unanimously to recommend town meeting approval. Article Twenty-five amends Section two point three use regulations scheduled for the zoning bylaw to provide for solar energy system and creates a new Section three point one five solar energy system for the zoning bylaw to establish a clear standards for the regulations of such solar energy systems within the town. The Planning Board is proposing Article Twenty-five to provide clear site plan review standards for the regulation of solar energy systems. With the recent interest in alternative energy combined with the various incentives being offered by the Commonwealth such as the Green Communities Act, towns will be under increased pressure to accommodate solar installations. The Planning Board has based this by- The Planning Board has based this bylaw on the Mass. Department of Energy Resources 2010 Model Solar Bylaw. Under the State Zoning Act, local zoning cannot prohibit or unreasonably regulate solar energy systems. Therefore, local regulations must be the minimum necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. With no current provisions in the Milford zoning bylaw to clearly regulate these installations, large-scale ground-mounted systems could be constructed in residential areas. While the model bylaw has suggested a capacity of 250 KW to distinguish between small and large systems, a 250 KW system would cover an acre of land, and at that size could be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare and to the property values and enjoyment of the surrounding neighborhood. This is why the Planning Board has reduced the threshold between small and large systems from 250 KW to 25 KW. A 25 KW system would cover approximately 600 square feet or the size of a two-car garage. Further, 25 KW is also the minimum output accepted by National Grid. In addition to protecting neighborhoods, adopting this amendment would also help Milford qualify as a green community under the Green Communities Act. The Planning Board urges your adoption of Article 25 as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Jim Stallone, Precinct 1. I actually work for a solar company, and there's a couple of things in here I have a little issue with as far as size of system. I currently install systems over 25K on residential homes. It's up to the individual and their power usage to be able to determine what size system they need. I also see in here as far as height restrictions on these systems. What we're saying here is we're also reducing the type of system that you can install. A ground-mounted system can be installed in many different ways. What we're restricting is what they can, how they can do that. One of the systems that's very advantageous for a homeowner is to do a top-up pole-mount system. By doing that, it's much taller, much beyond six feet on the residential that they have listed here as far as small systems, you know? So to give you this, a top-up pole-mount gives a homeowner advantage of going out and actually tilting it towards the sun in different times of years that it can actually produce 30% more power throughout the year. So I would propose that we change that or eliminate the height restriction. The other thing, too, is every panel, a 25K system on a two-car garage. Each panel right now maximum is about 250 watt output, and that's about 18 square feet. We're talking 25K system. We're in the approximate range of about 125 panels. That's not going to fit on a two-car garage. But I'm currently installing one right now in Grafton on a residence on a barn. So we're limiting what our homeowners can do, and what the idea behind this is actually try to eliminate your electric bill. And that's why the utilities have come up with net metering. Net metering is an effect where the homeowner can actually build credits on their account and try to virtually wipe out because no one's power is even throughout the year. National Grid does allow anybody to over 25K. There is no restrictions from National Grid. I work with them daily. The timeframe for getting acceptance from National Grid does get extended beyond 10K residential single-phase or up to 25,000 kilowatts three-phase systems. So I'm asking you to eliminate the height restrictions that they have listed here or amend them or have it restudied to make it more considerable for the residents of Milford. Because anybody in a piece of land, we're allowing them to put them on their home, okay? On a rooftop of a home. The average roof height's 30 feet in this area, okay? Why are we willing to look at it on someone's roof and we're not looking at it on a pole or a system, a ground-mounted system where now they don't have to worry about the maintenance of their home? So I just ask you to take that into consideration before you vote on this. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Gentlemen in the back.
Chris LaValle, Precinct 4. Another problem in this 25-kilowatt threshold is increasing efficiencies of these systems. Right now, most of these systems operate at 12 to 17% efficiency, most in the 14% efficiency range. However, Sharp and a German company have both tested this year, systems operating in a 40-kilowatt, sorry, 40%, efficiency range, which means a 333% increase over the average that we're seeing for systems right now. Right there, you're increasing threefold what you can have on your house or ground system, and that makes this threshold very tight. I think we really should be looking to pass this over and have it restudied and a dimensional system, a dimensional threshold set for these systems rather than a kilowatt issue, I think. So I'm urging everyone, please, let's pass this motion over and revisit how we look at this so we don't have to come back and vote for a change in this bylaw in three years' time when higher-efficiency systems hit the market. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? I didn't hear a motion to pass over that. Okay, I just heard it then. The gentleman has presented a motion to pass over this article, which is an attempt to take no action on it. It's debatable. Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over the article, the motion? Patrick.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me just be clear that the Planning Board, as well as a lot of other entities within this town, certainly encourage alternative energy, and we're not prohibiting it, and we're not looking in any way, shape, or form to try to limit what you're able to do. What we're, what we're actually encouraging, of course, or what you're allowed by, by right today is anything that you want to mount on your roof. And there's been a lot of businesses and many residents in this town who have taken opportunities over the last couple of years to do so. What we're trying to prohibit, and if this means that we have to come back in several years to modify it, I'm more than willing to do that, but what we're trying to, trying to prohibit, okay, is since we have no bylaws right now, allowing a company or a farm to come in in a residential neighborhood and just build whatever they want. And then you, as the neighbor, would have no say in it. What we're asking them to do is come in front of us for a site plan so that we can ensure that the rights of the neighborhood, the rights of the homeowner, the rights of the existing person who's there now is protected. That's what we're trying to do, and that's what this bylaw stands for. And again, I would encourage you not to pass over and let it be voted on as it stands. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article 25 as inserted in the, the motion as presented. All those in favor of passing over manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. All those in favor, stand and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Passing over the article. All those, all those opposed to passing over Article 25, rise and remain standing. Precinct 1. Precinct 1, seven in favor, five opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2 reports nine in favor, five opposed. Precinct 3. Precinct 3 reports nine in favor, four opposed. Precinct 4. Precinct 4 reports eight in favor, six opposed. Precinct 5. Precinct 5 reports three in favor, nine opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6 reports 10 in favor, six opposed. Precinct 7. Precinct 7 reports three in favor, 11 opposed. Precinct 8. Precinct 8 reports seven in favor, eight opposed. At large? At large reports zero in favor, 12 opposed. 55 having voted, 56, I'm sorry, having voted in favor of passing over, 66 opposed to passing over. We now continue debate on the motion as presented. Does any vote to care to be heard on the motion presented by the Chairman of the Planning Board? Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, just a suggestion. I think a couple of previous speakers, although far outside my area of expertise, probably raised some, some valid points and valid concerns, but it's also a valid concern to get something on the books as soon as possible. So it's my recommendation to everybody here is to pass this article. The Planning Board, I know them very well, they're willing to work with and listen to anybody, and if those people and any of their supporters, people with ideas come before the Planning Board with suggested changes or improvements to what we might pass here tonight, they'll be more than willing to listen, and there'll be a future town meeting to bring those forward. So I think that may be the best approach, and that's my suggestion.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to amend the zoning bylaw by adding the following section dealing with solar energy systems. Since this is an amendment to our zoning bylaw, requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor of the motion will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed to the motion will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1. Precinct 1 reports seven in favor, five opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2 reports eight in favor, six opposed. Precinct 3. Precinct 3. You used to be in. Precinct, Precinct 3. I'm sorry, 10 in favor, three opposed? Precinct 4, Lena. Precinct 4 reports eight in favor, seven opposed. Precinct 5. Precinct 5 reports 12 in favor, two opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6 reports 10 in favor, five opposed. Precinct 7. Precinct 7 reports 13 in favor, one opposed. Precinct 8. Precinct 8 reports 12 in favor, three opposed. At large? At large, 12 in favor, none opposed. 92 having voted in affirmative, 32 in the negative, the necessary two-thirds has been acquired and the motion is carried. Article 26. Mr. Accudi. Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $20,000 to be utilized for maintenance of the Upper Charles Trail by the Park and Highway Departments. $12,900 of said sum to be added to the Park Department salaries and wages account line item number 650-5110, and $7,100 of said sum to be added to the Park Department general expenses account number 650-5300, both as voted under Article 4 of the May 21, 2012 Annual Town Meeting. Motion made and seconded the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $20,000 to be utilized for maintenance of the Upper Charles Trail by the Park and Highway Departments. $12,900 of said sum to be added to the Park Department salaries and wages account line item number 650-5110, and $7,100 of said sum to be added to the Park Department general expenses account number 650-5300, both as voted under Article 4 of the May 21, 2012 Annual Town Meeting. Finance Committee Recommendation? Favorable. Did the Board of Selectmen vote on this? No. Mr. Accudi.
The maintenance of the trail has required an increased, increased commitment of man-hours and labor-related activities as the trail matures. This request is for funding of the trail maintenance by the Parks and the Highway Department.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 27. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,400 to be utilized to replace fencing at the Milford Senior Center adjacent to the rail trail area.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,400 to be used, utilized to replace, to be utilized to replace fencing at the Milford Senior Center adjacent to the rail trail area. Finance Committee Recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Selectman Murray.
Ladies and gentlemen, this article seeks to replace and repair about 100 feet of fencing that borders the trail behind the senior center. I don't know if it was damaged during the construction or just wear and tear, but it's just a portion of the fence.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 28. Mr. Chris Foley.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $171,000 said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of purchasing a sidewalk tractor equipped with snow blower, snow plow, and boom flail mower.
Okay, motion made and seconded the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $171,000 said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of purchasing a sidewalk tractor equipped with snow blower, snow plower, snow plow, boom flail mower. Okay? Finance Committee Recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Favorable. Mr. Chris Foley.
Ladies and gentlemen, if approved, this machine will be replacing a seventeen-year-old trackless sidewalk tractor. The current tractor is in need of costly repairs, is no longer reliable in extreme weather conditions. The new machine will be equipped with a snow blower, a power angle V plow, sidewalk sander, and a boom flail mower. The boom flail mower is a very, excuse me, efficient cutting tool and will be used on the bike trail and town streets to control brush overgrowth. In the past, we've always leased a machine for two or three weeks a year, and about $2,500 a week. This will definitely save us some money there. Therefore, I urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-nine? Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $9,500, said sum to be utilized to repair the town park basketball court.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $9,500, said sum to be utilized to repair the town park basketball court. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Moore.
I think everybody knows where the town park basketball court is. It's heavily used on a daily basis. We have repaired it in the past, but it's come time to do it again. It gets so much use. We have some cracks. It needs to be painted. The lines need to be done. So with this article, we can get all that done, and we would hope that everybody would support that article. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-one? Thirty, I'm sorry. Mr. Akhudi. How could I forget you, Mr. Akhudi?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $125,000 to be utilized for the purposes of work at Plains Park to include correcting differential settlement issues, funding applications to reduce environmental monitoring, and funding replacement and repair of the monitoring stations.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $125,000 to be utilized for purposes of work at Plains Park to include correcting differential settlement issues, funding application to reduce environmental monitoring, and funding replacement and repair to monitoring systems, monitoring stations. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The board of selectmen did not vote on this. Mr. Akhudi.
Because Plains Park was built on a landfill, settlement has occurred rendering parts of the park unusable, and to address this, some of the scope of the work is going to include a topography survey, regrading, looming, seeding, and modifications of the irrigation systems. As far as a breakdown of the $125,000, we're looking at about $115,000 to correct the differential settlement issues, $6,000 to fund the application to reduce the environmental monitoring, and $4,000 to fund the replacement of the repair of the monitoring stations. We hope you vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-one? Mr. Johnson? I'm sorry? Pass over Article thirty-one? Motion made in second, we pass over Article thirty-one since attempt to take no action on the article is inserted in the warrant. Does any vote again to be heard in the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article thirty-one. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Article thirty-one is passed over. Article thirty-two?
I move that the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency fund a sum of money in the amount of $200,000 to be added to the other post-employment benefit liability trust fund.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer from excess and deficiency a sum of money in the amount of $200,000 to be added to the other post-employment benefit liability trust fund. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Barbara?
The general accounting standard boards, number forty-five, requests that city and towns value other post-employment benefits. The town, like many cities and towns, has conducted an actuarial study to value its liability, and the figures are daunting. Every time I speak to the rating agency, the number one probing question is, what is the town doing to address its other post-employment liability trust? It's a major issue for all cities and towns in the state. Many of the ratings equal to Milford's, many of the towns with ratings equal to Milford's have already begun to make significant contributions to their other post-employment benefits trust. Milford has contributed $200,000 to date, and with this, we'll be contributing another $200,000. We have a long way to go, but I hope that you will support this action. Thank you.
Does any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-three? Town council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $81,198, said sum to be added to the police department personal services line item number two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero, as voted under Article four of the May twenty-first, 2012 annual town meeting, said sum to be utilized to fund the cost items in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Police Association.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $81,198, said sum to be added to the police department personal services line item number two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero, as voted under Article four of the May twenty-one, 2012 annual town meeting, said sum to be utilized to fund the cost of items in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Police Association. Finance committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. The board of selectmen unanimously favors it. Town council Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a recent, this reflects a recent settlement of a three-year contract with Milford Police Association beginning July first, 2012. The first year, the wage increase, it's one percent July first, 2012, and then one percent at the midpoint, which is January first, 2013. So it's a net one and a half percent, and then July first, 2013, and July first, 2014, two percent on each of these dates. That's within the range of or lower than settlements that are coming out of the Joint Labor Management Committee, which is the body which has jurisdiction over police and fire bargaining. So from that perspective, it's a favorable settlement, and the selectmen urge your support.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-four? Town treasurer?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be added to the treasurer's professional service line as voted under Article four of the May twenty-first, 2012 annual town meeting as line number one-four-five-five-three-hundred.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $3,000 to be added to the treasurer's professional service line item as voted under Article four of the May twenty-one, 2012 annual town meeting as line item number one-four-five-dash-five-three-zero-zero. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Barbara?
This amount of money was actually submitted and requested and approved by the finance committee through the budget process. It was through an oversight that it was omitted from Article four. It'll be used for the actuarial study for the other post-employment benefit, actuarial analysis, which has been completed at this point, and so this money is backfilling the budget so that we have enough money to manage all our expenses this year. I ask for your support.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-five? Motion made in second, we pass over Article thirty-five. Does any vote again to be heard in the motion to pass over Article thirty-five? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article thirty-five. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Article thirty-five is passed over. Article thirty-six? Town council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $45,000 to be utilized for the replacement of worn-out furniture and fixtures at the Milford Town Library.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $45,000 to be utilized for the replacement of worn-out furniture and fixtures at the Milford Town Library. Finance committee recommendation? Favorable. And also, no. Town council Moody.
Ladies and gentlemen, as I think many of you know, in recent years, this body has authorized the trustees to do significant improvements to the library, which they've undertaken and completed. You've authorized essential replacement of the computer system, which they've undertaken. The furnishings in the building go back largely to original furnishings from 1986, and they've had a lot of usage over the years. They're threadbare, they're worn, and they're somewhat of a danger in some respects. So the library trustees seek this $45,000 so they can complete the upgrade of the library, take care of the furnishings, make sure they're safe and presentable. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? Mr. Shane.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend the motion to $38,000, please.
The motion's been amended to substitute the amount of $38,000 for $45,000. Any vote again to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Shane.
The $45,000 was the original mountain, and the bid came back, and the discussion came back at $38,000. And that's what the finance committee approved.
Yes. Sure. She's not a registered voter in the town of Milford? Not a registered voter in the town of Milford, all right? You're not, you're not a registered voter in the town of Milford. Director of the library would like to speak. She requires unanimous consent of the body. Does anyone object? Hearing no objections, you may address the meeting.
Hi, I'm Sue Edmonds, and I'm the director of the Milford Town Library. And the thing that really came back was $38,525.07. So that's the bare minimum that we can use, and if we're going to nickel and dime, as like everybody else has gotten their original, you know, money tonight, because we are also dealing with a lot of stuff that has to be left, we have to take care of, you know, fixtures and storage and everything. So if we're going to nickel and dime, I want it $38,525.07.
The only problem is that you must be an elected town meeting member in order to make any motion or amendment to the motion, so your comments are taken. You? Town council Moody. All right, we now have an amendment to an amendment which inserts the amount of $39,000. Any vote again to be heard in the amendment to the amendment of $39,000? All those in favor of the amendment to the amendment of $39,000 manifest by saying aye? Opposed? No. Therefore, we have further discussion on the motion as amended, which would be that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $39,000. Any vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $39,000 to be utilized for the replacement of worn-out furniture and fixtures at the Milford Town Library. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Okay. Next article. Mr. Solazi.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from those funds appropriated under Article eleven of the October twenty-fifth, 2010 special town meeting, said sum to be added to those funds appropriated under Article twenty-two of the October twenty-fourth, 2011 special town meeting. All of said funds to be used for architectural and engineering services related to the repainting of the exterior of the Milford Town Hall and the rebuilding of steps to both entrances to the town hall.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from those funds appropriated under Article eleven of the October twenty-five, 2010 special town meeting, said sum to be added to those funds appropriated under Article twenty-two of the October twenty-fourth, 2011 special town meeting. All of said funds to be used for the architectural and engineering services related to the repainting of the exterior of the Milford Town Hall and the rebuilding of steps to both entrances to the town hall. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote again to be heard, Mr. Solazi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article seeks no additional new funds, only a transfer between existing accounts. Thankfully, town meeting members had previously approved $330,000 for the repainting of the town hall. We were quite fortunate to receive a low bid of $123,000, and we will be returning money to the town from that account. At about the same time, the town meeting approved $64,000 for the rebuilding of the stairs at the town hall on both sides and the handicap ramp at Draper Park. When the masons removed the old granite, they opened up the old building and all we saw was holes. So obviously, we've got to fix holes in the walls on both sides of the stairs, and we also had to change the railings on both sides. So change orders necessitated probably a $19,000 transfer, and that's, we're looking for the 25. Hopefully, nothing else will turn up, and we'll be probably completing this, both projects, within the next week and a half, two weeks. So again, only a transfer, and we'd respectfully request your support of this. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-eight? Mr. Shane.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town raise and appropriate sum of money in the amount of $500,000, said sum to be added to the stabilization fund established under General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $500,000, said sum to be added to the stabilization fund established under General Law's Chapter forty, Section five B. Mr. Shane? Any comment?
Town meeting members, in order to manage the future woodland project, we're recommending that we add $500,000 on an annual basis, and when woodland project hits, we'll start removing money from the stabilization account to offset the difference between the three million debt limit that we're recommending and what we will owe for principal and interest.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-nine? Mr. Shane.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote-
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $1 million from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to offset the operating capital debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year 2013.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $1 million from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year 2013. Any vote occur to be heard? Mr. Shane.
This goes in keeping with what we've recommended and promised, $1 million this year, and we will discuss next year's next year.
Any other vote occur to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. It's a pleasure of the meeting. Motion made in second, we resolve the warrant, all in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Monitors, please bring forward their attendance sheets.